We're going to go ahead and get started. Good evening, everyone. It is 5:03. Roll call, Mr. City Clerk, please.
Councilmember Duran.
Here.
Councilmember McReynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Manganay.
Here.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Here.
Councilmember Campos.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Halter.
Here.
Mayor Dr. Sanchez Palacios.
Here.
Seven members present. We do have a quorum.
Thank you. Councilmember Duran, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
It would be my honor. Would you please stand if you're able? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Close session report, Mr. City Attorney.
Mayor, the council took up both items on the city council's close session agenda, and there was no reportable action.
Thank you. Any city council communications? If so, please hit the Q button. Otherwise, then look like it. I will move on then to city manager communications.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I may have Chief Dickey come to the podium just to give a quick update on our fireworks enforcement over the holiday?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. So I wanted to address kind of just an overall view of the Fourth of July deployment and what our folks encountered. So it is by far the largest deployment day for our agency over the course of a year. On that particular day, we typically have about 24 total officers working in a normal deployment period. On this day, we had 91 total people out working. So it's over half of our department was actually out on that day. Part of that is we do specific fireworks enforcement detail during the evening hours. We put two additional officers and two additional cars. Sorry, I feel like I'm talking too loud here. We put two additional officers and two additional cars on each of the four beats that we have in the city, specific for fireworks enforcement. In addition to that, this year, some newer technology that we have that we've been deploying over the last few years is our drone teams. So last year, we were able to get up with one drone team. This year, we had four total drone teams out. It's kind of a multi-layered process, but what we do, we don't patrol with drones. What we actually do is we respond to areas where there's problems. So monitoring through our dispatch center, in addition to that, officers who are out in the beats who are seeing problem areas, we then send our drone teams to those areas, and we get up overhead, we take video footage, and we cite after the fact. So want to be clear, overall enforcement efforts that night were much more robust than we've done in the past. Clearly, I've told you I'll be transparent with you, we had some great success. This year, at about a 10-to-1 clip, we've had 10 compliments versus one complaint. That's from the public that we've heard. That's unusual for us after the Fourth of July. I was really happy with that, but I'm also very aware that there's some areas of the city that were absolutely impacted, and we'll address that moving forward, and we'll analyze our calls for service moving forward to see if we can better deploy our resources. I just want to give you a quick overview of a 2024 versus 2025 comparison. So over the course of the month, from 6:06 to 7:06, we saw a 16% decrease this year in overall fireworks calls, which is substantial for us. We went from 546 total calls in that time period down to 403. The three-day total, interesting, was even for the year, so 308 last year to 308 this year, and that was for the third, fourth, and fifth. But interestingly, on the fourth itself, we were down 12%. We went from 256, almost 300 total calls actually that year, down to 226 calls this year. So that's the data. Again, to be very clear, we know that there's areas of the city, specifically on the east end and an area off of the west end of town, off of the avenue, that we've received information that there were a larger volume of complaints in those areas. Next year, our deployment will adjust that and absolutely make corrections to try to address those things. At this point, I just spoke with Commander Weeks, who's our special operations commander. He oversaw the entire operation. We are anticipating probably about, so it's difficult because we have to go into a GIS map and overlay footage to get addresses so that we can issue citations. So last year, we issued nine citations from our drone. This year, we're looking at about 25 is our best guess estimate at this point, based on the footage that he's reviewed so far. So a substantial increase over last year. We also have, we confiscated a large number of fireworks as well. We have what we call KNAC boxes, that are lock boxes. They were both filled and overflowing. The bomb squad came out and cleaned those out today. So that's a quick overview. Again, to be clear, we felt we were in a much better place this year based on community input and call volume. The data shows that. We clearly have some work to do, and we'll continue to strive to kind of spread out our resources better moving forward in the years to come.
Thank you. No questions? Nope. Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Thank you for that. Moving on to our, in our agenda, we'll head now to public communications, general public communications. This portion of the meeting where members of the public may speak on any city-related topic that is not listed on tonight's agenda. Please note that under the Brown Act, the city council cannot discuss, deliberate, or take action on the items raised during this public comment period. And as a reminder, I ask everyone to help maintain decorum by helping everyone feel comfortable, whether online or in person, and to show support in an inclusive and respectful way. You're welcome to use the American Sign Language sign for applause by raising your hands and gently twisting your wrists. The initial public communications period is limited to the 20 speakers with priority given to in-person participants. And if you wish to speak, please submit your speaker card now, either electronically or by using the raised hand feature if you're joining us virtually. This ensures that we have an accurate count of speakers. Mr. City Clerk, do we have any speakers for this portion of the agenda?
Thank you, Mayor. We have three speaker cards for general public comment.
Thank you. And so they'll receive three minutes each since we have 10 or fewer speakers. Public comment is now open.
Thank you, Mayor. Our first speaker is Susan Mulligan, followed by George Amendola and Bert Handy.
Good evening. My name is Susan Mulligan. I'm a member of the Water Commission, but I'm speaking in my personal capacity. I want to tell you who I am so you understand where the comment is coming from. I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from Stanford, a master's in business administration from UCLA, 35 years working in the water industry, 27 managing construction projects, mostly large-scale water infrastructure, and eight as general manager at Cuyahoga Municipal Water District. I joined the Water Commission five years ago, and I've served there for five years. So I just want you to understand who I am. I've been hearing you get a lot of input at these meetings from, meeting after meeting, from people who don't have experience in this field with water infrastructure or the water industry in general. And they tell you things that are factually incorrect and fuel conspiracy theories, and it's frustrating to hear that. And I just want to call that out and let you know that you have very capable staff and extremely experienced consultants. They're doing a good job on these projects. Unfortunately, all projects right now, infrastructure projects in California and to a lesser extent across the nation, are suffering from massive cost increases. And they're trying to keep estimates up to date so that you can set rates. When we get to the day that the project is bid, then we'll know the real cost. But I would say that it's really unfortunate that the prices are going up so much. From a rate perspective, it's very difficult to have to raise rates a lot and affect the affordability. But the water pure and MBR projects aren't optional, and I think you might hear some of that tonight, why they aren't. They've got to be built. What can be done is to build them as cost-effective as possible and encourage the staff to do that. And as you look at the rate structure, try to structure it so that people who use less water can control their costs and pay less. Thank you.
George Amendola, followed by Bert Handy.
Hi, good evening. So I want you to know when Susan Mulligan was up for reappointment during the Appointments' Recommendation Committee, I actually recommended her reappointment. Now, we have different opinions about the success or the well-being of this project. A little bit of background on me. I've been in the telecommunications business most of my career, which is a public utility. I'm very familiar with dealing with rates, pricing, infrastructure projects, regulatory, and all the aspects of running a public utility, both as a senior executive and officer of two NASDAQ companies, and in addition, having my own privatized licensed international long-distance carrier, a U.S.-certified with the FCC carrier, and a competitive local exchange carrier within the state of California. It's a commodity, water, very similar to any other public utility. The principles of the business are in essence the same. It's just a different transportation network, a different commodity, a different pricing structure, but the principles are fundamentally the same. I also have an undergraduate degree in accounting, business, and economics. So with that said, my biggest concern here this evening is the impact and the burden on the ratepayers. Nobody is talking about that in any meaningful way. You have a lot of projects coming before you for approval. You're going to talk about rates, but the information has been spoon-fed to you, and it's not complete and accurate. We have some information that we'll try to share with you during the rate section, but I want you to consider, when you're evaluating this this evening, the 2012 consent decree gives the city the right to declare financial infeasibility, and it's time to do so. The project is exceeding its budget, which sets off the triggers for a financial infeasibility. There's no oversight body other than this council that has the ability to make any change. The Water Commission, we heard from Mike Savage last week. He's an engineer. He never looked at it from a financial perspective. All he did was validate what staff has put before you. Nobody's concerned with the ratepayer, the local business, the consumer. They're the ones who will be carrying this project. They're the ones who are burdened by this project. Please think about that when you're hearing these items tonight. Thank you.
Bert Handy, followed by Glenn Overly.
Could you bring up my slide? Good evening, council, staff, and the public. I am here, not as a Water Commissioner, as a private person. I do not have a degree, as the prior two people discussed. I do have a degree in marketing and management, and I have been observing and attending all the water meetings for the last 10 years. I've been following the Water Commission meetings and everything else, and a lot of the local agencies around, so I have an understanding of the water supplies. Next slide, please. This slide basically shows population has increased from 27,986 to 113,5,000 in 1970 to 2023, while water consumption has decreased from 21,524 to 12,665. Basically, it has gone down considerably. It's gone up, the population's gone up about 100%, and consumption has gone down about 50% or 40%. Next slide, please. This shows the availability of the water within the Ventura area. Up on the upper, directly at the top, 3551 acre feet, that's Lake Casitas. Foster Park is 2,000 acre feet a year, which is right below that. The Santa Paula Basin is 3345, which was taken out of the Santa Paula annual report, which is higher than Ventura reports in their comprehensive water resources report. 4,000 is in the Mound Basin, and 5304 is in the Oxnard Basin. The Oxnard Basin, with their ED program, they are going to be able to be completely out of overdraft by the end of the time. That's a total of 18,706 acre feet available for Ventura water from 2025, and we only used 13,802 acre feet of water as an average for the last five years. We also have 10 miles of aquifers off the coast. That is untapped, has been unresourced, and that is of water available to us. Next slide, please. This slide was presented in the last Water Commission meeting, and if you notice the arrows, in 2031, it says they are not going to use the Mound Basin at all. Where's that water going? It's going to go up to the Recycled Water or the Pure Water Project. Why are we eliminating a source? Where is it going to go? The probability of it going out to the ocean in those 10 miles of aquifers is very high. So why are we spending all this money for a project when we don't have the need for the water? In addition to what you've seen here, the other side of that coin is we are going to be going down. Currently, we're at a 47 gallons per capita per day, and it's going to go down to 42, plus outdoor water usage has not been reflected in this, and with the increase in rates, it's going to go down even further. Thank you.
Next speaker is Glenn Overly, followed by Trevor Gottman.
Had not planned to speak, but then I saw Miles Hogan here, and I remembered, one time I got off subject matter, and Miles, when you were acting city attorney, you called me up, and we had a discussion afterwards, and we settled it. But what I would suggest is that perhaps the comments from the first speaker may have been related to topics that will be covered, and I'm asking the city attorney and also Madam Mayor, can you please reel that in a bit? Thank you.
And our final speaker is Trevor Gottman. Trevor, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, city council, city staff, community members. Trevor Gottman speaking. I am following up on last night, and I also want to give you a little bit of background. I came to the United States in 1986, but before that, I lived in a city in Namibia called Windook, or Wind Hook, as you may pronounce it in English. But Windook has a, and has always had, has recycled every bit of water, and it's a natural process to a large degree. There was no bioreactors or anything like that. So it may behoove you to sort of also look at that and see if that's, if we could apply some of these things. I've no doubt you have, but that's just the background. I am still pushing for a Ventura Volunteer Community Corps because we've got a city full of people with all kinds of experience. Many of them want to serve and serve our community. So please look into that. What I also am asking, and I'm willing to do this for you, is not only with the volunteers, I gladly do the volunteers and write the software, do whatever, take the things, but I believe it should be done by the city. What I'd like you to do is have Zoom on all the meetings. If CAPS are doing it, I'll speak to CAPS myself and see how we can go ahead and get them to assist. Maybe they are willing to employ me or bring me in as a volunteer to host those Zoom meetings, but it would require your approval. And because parks and rec, and from my point of view, because I'm taking care of animals or, you know, the four-legged kind, they, you know, getting out into the fields is very important. And we've got our neighbors up in Montecito and Santa Barbara that have off-leash trails and horse trails and what have you, and that are maintained by volunteers. And I'd like to set up a similar kind of situation where we can get rights from the landowners to build these paths through their properties onto public lands, wherever they are, public lands, and then, so that we can all, from every neighborhood, find an honest legal way to actually go out and experience life as our ancestors have. And that's really what I'm going to keep pushing for, and I hope you take me seriously. But I am serious, and I'm willing to do whatever. We live in a wonderful place, and every day I see dozens and dozens of people that confer with what I believe and appreciate living in this town. So thank you very much. Have a wonderful evening. I look forward to speaking to you later. Bye-bye.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, anything to follow up on public comment?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to our consent items on the agenda. We only have two consent items for tonight to consider. Any comments, questions, no votes or requests to pull any of these items? Otherwise, I'll need a motion to approve consent items.
Move to approve.
Thank you. I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. And we have no public comment on consent items. We do have a motion and a second. You can go ahead and enter your vote. All votes have now been entered. Seven ayes, and the motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to our formal items, the first one being number three, we have a history of the development of the Ventura Water Pure, I'm sorry, Ventura Water Supply Projects and the Membrane Bio-reactor and Ultraviolet Light Disinfection Projects. And we'll have a staff presentation, and you're all ready to go, so I turn it over to you.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Dr. Sanchez Palacios, and Deputy Mayor Halter, and the council members, the city of Ventura. Thank you for having a special evening for us right before your break. We appreciate your time and the extra consideration for our items. I'm joined here this evening, oh, for the record, I am Gina Dorrington. I'm your general manager for Ventura Water. And I'm joined here with Jennifer Trebo. She's our Assistant General Manager over Water Resources, and Miles Hogan, our Senior Assistant City Attorney. And so, as the mayor said, we're here to go over the history of our water supply projects and the Ventura Water Pure, that include the Ventura Water Pure Program, and our Membrane Bio-reactor and Ultraviolet Light Disinfection Project. And we're going to clarify the drivers. Why do we need to do these projects for legal and regulatory compliance and water supply? Go over a little bit of the development and the evolution of these projects, and speak briefly about the cost drivers and control. So we have a brand, Ventura Water, and that is to provide a trusted life source for generations for our community. And we got a great opportunity this past holiday weekend to go out and celebrate with our customers at the Fourth of July Street Fair. We had models of the technology that we will be using in these projects, and we're offering samples of purified water that were generously donated from our friends in Silicon Valley who have already successfully implemented their advanced purification system. So we got feedback that was very overwhelmingly positive and supportive, people saying to us things such as, "This is really good water. It's about time. This is great," and anything you can do to help Ventura's water supply. Still, there are concerns about why we're doing this project. There's a lot of questions of, like, do we need to continue to do this project? And there are two main drivers for the city, regulatory and legal compliance, water supply with the overall reaching goal to provide clean drinking water for public health and So I'll dive into the regulatory, the legal and regulatory compliance drivers. The city of Ventura's wastewater treatment facility is located along the Santa Clara River and discharges into the Santa Clara River estuary. Since the facility's inception in the 1950s, where this facility was first located, the Santa Clara River estuary has become a federally listed endangered species habitat, and changes in laws such as the enclosed bays and estuaries policy have now made it unlawful for the city to discharge into the Santa Clara River estuary. Permitting of this facility continually requires the city to remove its wastewater discharge. So when the city started to consider how to remove its wastewater discharge from the estuary, there were various phase studies that have been conducted over the years. Phase one studies included a treatment wetland study, a recycled water market study, and an estuary sub watershed study. Phase two included a diversion infrastructure study, and the phase three studies continued the estuary study, a nutrient and toxicity study, and a groundwater study. The phase three studies were also then reviewed by a technical review team and an independent scientific review panel. All of these studies were All of these studies were vetted, reviewed, and commented on by multiple resource and regulatory stakeholders. In order to ensure that the city achieved requirements with the law, a federally mandated consent decree was issued and supported by the city's National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit that required the city to divert everything above a continued discharge level, which I will speak to later in the slides of what that means, of one-point-nine million gallons per day in Phase 1A by the end of 2025. This will be achieved by the completion of the outfall and outfall pump stations this year. It also required that of this diverted discharge, it needed to go to a beneficial reuse. This will be achieved through the Advanced Water Purification Facility and groundwater wells by the end of 2030. In addition, the consent decree required that any remaining discharge that go into the Santa Clara River estuary meet a nitrate limit of four milligrams per liter. This will be achieved with the Membrane Bio-reactor and Ultraviolet Light Disinfection Project at the Water Reclamation Facility by the end of 2030. There have also been a lot of questions regarding a fifty-five million dollar net investment cap provision, and that the project now exceeds financial infeasibility. The financial infeasibility provision of the consent decree establishes a process for a ninety-day negotiation with the consent decree environmental parties. It does not excuse the city from diverting discharge from the estuary and only allows for an informal meet and confer and a dispute resolution process to determine a diversion project that could be implemented in compliance with all terms of the consent decree and meet that fifty-five million dollar cap. There are no other alternatives, as I will discuss further on in the Environmental Impact Report, that are under the fifty-five million dollar cap. Regardless of a dispute resolution under the consent decree, the city outside of that must still comply with state and federal discharge laws, which it is currently in violation Now, I will let you know, when I came into this city in 2014 to be your interim wastewater utility manager, I was not thrilled about taking on a consent decree. And at the time, the city had two consent decrees, with a grade-five wastewater certificate that is a very heavy lift and viability on certification. So I asked a lot of hard questions, and I did ask, including, do we have to do this, and can we get out of it? But here's what I have learned and come to understand. There is a considerable risk and costs associated with not moving forward with these projects. The city risks being in significant noncompliance with state and federal discharge laws. The city risks potential new lawsuits. The city risks being not in good standing faith with its environmental and financial partners. And the city risks entering another drought phase without a new water supply source. If the city does nothing, it is estimated that over sixteen million dollars in penalties, fines, and litigation costs will be incurred per year. The city can lose funding that has already been loaned to and granted to on these projects, as well as jeopardize any additional grant funding for not only water and wastewater projects, but for other projects within the city. So those are our legal drivers. And now I'm going to turn it over to Jenny to talk about our water supply challenges.
Good evening, Council. Now that Gina has given you the background on the regulatory compliance reasons for the Ventura Water Pure Project, I'd like to spend a few minutes discussing the city's water supply and the need for this project from a water supply perspective. The city's current water supply is provided by the Ventura River, Lake Casitas, and three groundwater basins: Oxnard Plain, the Mound Basin, and the Santa Paula Basin. We anticipate future decreases to these sources for a variety of reasons. First, on the Ventura River, there's been litigation ongoing since the city was sued by Santa Barbara Channel Keeper in 2014 alleging overuse of Ventura River. We settled with Channel Keeper in 2019 with a flow-based pumping regime that limits the city's use of the river under low-flow conditions. Ongoing negotiations, including with California Department of Fish and Wildlife and the State Water Resources Control Board, will likely further reduce the city's ability to rely on Ventura River supplies during dry weather. Lake Casitas, a shared resource managed by another agency, Casitas Municipal Water District, reached historic lows in 2022, and the city was subject to reduced allocations from the lake. The Oxnard Plain's basin allocation is expected to decrease by up to forty percent in twenty-four, by 2040, as proposed in the Groundwater Sustainability Plan approved and adopted by the Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency in December of 2019. Shortly after that, a group of agricultural landowners filed a comprehensive groundwater adjudication lawsuit to determine the rights of all users in the basin. These two actions make the Oxnard Plain basin allocation highly uncertain. Climate change could further reduce the availability of water from these supplies. All of these challenges together highlight the need to augment and diversify the city's water supply portfolio. The water supply challenges that the city is facing are not new. We live in a desirable place with highly variable rainfall. The city has struggled with water supply security since its inception. Average rainfall at the City Hall gauge from nineteen fifty-seven to nineteen ninety-two is fourteen-point-seven-three inches. As you can see in the graph to the right, rainfall is often well above or well, or below the average and rarely near it. During the last drought, 2013 through 2022, rainfall was below the average eight of the ten years. Water supply shortages have occurred frequently in the past, notably in the thirties, fifties, sixties, nineties, which I'll talk about in a minute, and the most recent one, 2013 through 2022. The last major water supply project was a, regionally, was the construction of Lake Casitas in nineteen fifty-eight. The water supply strategy since then has largely been, hope for rain and require customers to conserve more water. As I mentioned on the previous slide, this isn't the first time the city has faced water supply challenges, and it isn't the first time the city has explored alternatives and even selected one, but then it rained, and water supply planning was no longer a priority. In the nineteen sixties, one solution was also a purification facility to treat wastewater to drinking water standards, but then it rained and flooded. In nineteen ninety, there was a critical water shortage. Thirty years later, the city explored a wide variety of options, including towing an iceberg from Antarctica to California. The main debate, though, was over desalination versus connecting to state water project. But then it rained, and the city determined that it had enough water supply for another sixteen years. Eighteen years later, eighteen years later, the next drought began, and no progress had been made towards creation of new water supplies. It takes decades to plan for, design, and construct new water supplies. The time to do that is in between droughts, not during them. As Gina reviewed in her previous slides, because of the regulatory and legal requirements, coupled with the onset of drought conditions, the city began planning for potable reuse Ventura Water Pure Project back in 2012. Reminiscent of the nineties, the drought ended before the project could be completed, but as history shows us, another drought will be in our future. Anticipated operation of the facility is not until 2030. Before I talk more about our current water supplies and demands, I just want to spend a few more minutes looking back at the last drought. This photo on top shows areas surrounding the lake that are normally underwater, and the graphic illustrates the lake's declining levels from full in 2007 to historic lows in 2022. And then, this is aerial photograph of a full lake in 2024 compared to the thirty percent full lake in 2022, with the space between the red outline and the blue water showing the areas that were dry during that drought. So previous I discussed how there hadn't been much water supply planning between, after nineteen ninety-four. In 2012, in 2012, the city began developing annual assessments of water supply and demand titled the Comprehensive Water Resources Report, or CWRR. This report looks at water supply allocations, water availability, conditions of infrastructure, hydrologic conditions, and water demands to determine if a water shortage exists and if conservation measures are warranted. It's important to note that the CWRR is done annually because water supply conditions can change quickly. The most recent report focuses on short-term supply and demand comparisons because the city will be developing its 2025 Urban Water Management Plan, which takes a broader look at demand and supply comparisons later this year. This slide highlights that while the city's water supplies are local, they are managed primarily by other agencies who control both the price and availability of that water. It's also important to note that the ranges are based on current conditions and are evaluated and updated every year, and will likely change in the future. For example, the Casitas allocation is based on a five-year average of in-district usage during non-drought restriction years. Since 2025 was the second year of no drought restrictions from Casitas, water supply projections after 2028 will be based on the five-year average usage from the Casitas district from 2024 to 2028. So the high number on this slide, fifty-five fifty-one, will not be available after 2028. While the high end of the supply range is over twenty thousand acre feet, the low range is approximately twelve thousand acre feet. If you compare the average demands to the low end of the supply range, you can see that there is still risk in running out of water supply, even though there appears to be plenty of water. This is a backwards look, but we can do the same looking forward, which I'll do later. So this slide illustrates just how close the city came to running out of water during the preceding drought. Projected demands were greater than projected supplies, and the city was in a stage-three water shortage for most of the drought. Without the conservation of our customers, we would have exhausted our water supplies. In 2015, even with conservation, supply and demand were nearly equal. Looking at the previous slide, you might be tempted to repeat the decisions of the nineteen nineties and say that with continued conservation, the city has enough water to get through the next drought, but you would be wrong. Looking at this graph, we can see that water usage started declining in 2014, it continued in 2015, but leveled off after that, and actually increased in 2021, which was a very dry year. This is indicative of demand hardening and a sign that further conservation will be difficult to achieve, especially during dry years when it's needed the most. In fact, in 2020, the governor asked for an additional fifteen percent conservation front based on 2020 usage, but since the city's conservation had held since 2013, we were unable to achieve that goal of an additional fifteen percent conservation, even with our aggressive outreach efforts. So we barely made it through the last drought. Do we have enough water for the next one? The next few slides will help you answer that question. This graph is from the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan and shows the assessment at that time. The conclusion was that without new supplies, state water project, and Ventura Water Pure, the city could run out of water as soon as 2035. We'll be formally updating this analysis over the next year, but the next two slides provide an update to demand projections and potential supply scenarios. This graph adjusts the demands to the dry year demand projections from the 2025 CWRR, reflecting current demands. Casita's supplies have been reduced to the current five-year average usage from the Casita service area. Groundwater supplies have been reduced by ten percent to reflect potential well or distribution system maintenance issues that can occur. This scenario shows that the city would still need new water supplies as early as 2030. Another scenario, a little more dire this one. This shows a reduced Casita's allocation consistent with the stage-four drought declaration, a reduction in our Santa Paula Basin allocation consistent with our judgment, and minimal Ventura water, Ventura River water available due to ongoing drought. The demands are frozen at the current five-year average, and the dry year demands escalate those demands by ten percent, which is based on experience of usage during dry periods of our residents. Again, this shows that water shortages could occur as early as 2030. In conclusion, it's difficult to project demand and supplies accurately over twenty-plus years because of all the variables and uncertainty involved, but there are many scenarios under which the city will not have enough water supply in the future without investment in new water supplies.
So the city is faced with a discharge problem, and at the same time, we saw our water supplies challenged. And therefore, the Ventura Water Supply Project's Environmental Impact Report was adopted in 2019 to address both of those issues. The Environmental Impact Report analyzed alternatives to meet the following criteria: augment local water supply, provide drought and disaster resilient water supply, protect and improve ecological resources and beneficial uses of the Santa Clara River estuary, improve municipal water supply quality, and maintain, maintain compliance with the regulatory discharge permits. The Ventura Water Pure Program was the preferred selected alternative that met all of that As I mentioned previously, stakeholder consultation developed a phased approach to the discharge diversion, with Phase 1A implemented first, with a continued discharge limit of one-point-nine million gallons a day to the Santa Clara River estuary, and an available twenty-eight-hundred to thirty-six-hundred acre feet of pure water produced per year. After a monitoring period of approximately five years of this reduced discharge, it will then be determined whether or not we can move to Phase 1B, which would be an annual continued discharge limit of zero to zero-point-five million gallons per day, with a production of four thousand to fifty-four hundred acre feet of pure water produced per year. To be fiscally and feasibly responsible, the city has gone back several times, and as recently as 2023, double-checked on the EIR alternatives and some alternatives that were outside of the EIR. At that time, the Ventura Water Pure alternative was still the only alternative that met all the criteria and remained the lowest estimated cost. Some items to note with this slide and display is that the MBR price estimate at that time was carried through with each alternative, because regardless of any alternative, the MBR needed to be completed for wastewater compliance. Another note is that there was a timeline restriction of 2027, and our memorandum of agreement with our consent decree partners had sent, has since been adjusted to accommodate for time delays. Still, the Ventura Water Pure Program has showed to be the lowest-cost alternative. And while these are 2023 estimates, we have no indication that conditions have changed and the relationship to the alternative has changed. We, we assume that all costs for each alternative have increased just as Ventura Water Pure has increased. Now, no thanks to that previous slide, the Ventura Water Pure Program and the Membrane Bio-reactor Project are often confused of being a joint total costs. And while it is true that their separate costs are a total expense to the city and the ratepayer, they are two distinct projects. As the Ventura Water Pure Program was under development, the city initiated its wastewater master plan in 2021. The inspection of this wastewater facility indicated that the facility was structurally deficient and evaluated what repairs were in the capital improvement program to address these deficiencies. Through thoughtful consideration and evaluation, the city decided to upgrade the wastewater treatment facility to the Membrane Bio-reactor and Ultraviolet, Ultraviolet Light Disinfection Process. This eliminated over four existing capital improvement program projects and reduced the cost of needed infrastructure at the Advanced Water Purification Facility. Another consideration into choosing the Membrane Bio-reactor process was the overall lifecycle costs of the Membrane Bio-reactor versus the replacement pieces of the CIP. Both had considerable upfront costs, but the Membrane Bio-reactor offered longevity of operations, while the initial infrastructure repairs would need to be replaced again in a shorter cycle. Now, while we intend to bring back to you, the city council, the month-over-month, year-over-year cost increases that were encrested of us, we still have some finances done their portion, and we still have some meetings left with finance to go through the narrative of those costs year-over-year, but I'm going to go ahead and offer some insight into costs specific to these projects. And industry, every aspect of life, we're experiencing cost increases. The Water Department is feeling these increases and experiencing them just as well. It has become more expensive to treat, buy, deliver water to the community. Our base costs is, our based costs is of electricity, chemicals, and equipment- Our base costs of electricity, chemicals, and equipment have doubled, if not tripled, over the last decade. But taking into consideration what the costs are for these large projects, it's important to put into context that these projects are multi-generational, and it takes years to evaluate them, design them, and construct them. We are building water supply and wastewater treatment for the entire city of Ventura. We are vulnerable to outside factors such as inflation and supply chain disruptions. And these projects, considering their timeline, have been through four presidential administrations, four Ventura Water general managers, four city of Ventura mayors, and five sitting city councils. This item on Ventura Water Pier has been brought to the city council over 75 times since 2019. And what we can say for certain is the longer it takes to do these projects, the more they will cost. This chart is just to give an illustration of what the cost estimate refinement has looked like through each capital improvement plan cycle for the Ventura Water Pier program. These are estimates of what we expect costs to look like, and we will be getting into worst-case scenario ranges when we get into our rate conversation in the next item. A same look for the membrane bioreactor capital improvement project. We will be discussing more finer detail when we get into our bioreactor item later this We hear the concerns about costs, the comments about ballooning, about costs being out of control, but staff has implemented several cost controls to keep this work continuing and to mitigate the cost increases that are out of our control. As you heard from our water commission in the last presentation, staff removed unnecessary components of the advanced water purification facility, such as the administration and outreach building. We reduced the laboratory to process needs only. We reduced the landscape footprint within the advanced purification facility. Under the implementation of the construction manager at risk, we saved costs by relocating the membrane bioreactor location using the method of getting a guaranteed maximum pricing of constructibility at 60%. Through this construction manager at risk alternative, we're able to do refinement of design and value engineering before we get to a bid certain price. Last month, we approved the owner-controlled insurance program, giving greater insurance coverage for the city with no additional markup and allowing the city to have some cost savings involved with insurance and contracting. And mostly, staff has been aggressive and successful in achieving supportive funding for these projects. We have $173 million low interest low from the WIFIA program and over $108 million worth of grant funding secured. These are successes. Despite the challenges, the city has accomplished great things and is moving forward in meeting compliance. The ocean outfall has been installed. The outfall pump station is being constructed. The city will meet its first obligation to divert discharge from the Santa Clara River Estuary by the end of this year. Federal agencies have backed these projects and want to be part of our success. And for the city's strategic priorities, this presentation and the staff report directly supports the strategic priority of economic vitality and development and the focus area of continued to maintain and improve conditions of roads, water, storm drains, and parks, as these will provide a new sustainable water and wastewater infrastructure that will ensure water supply and wastewater services to support the priority. The information supports the strategic priority of climate change and environmental stewardship with the focus area of public input and community engagement and accountability. We have demonstrated these projects through multiple presentations to you and your water commission, and these water supply wastewater projects will allow the city continue to provide reliable water sources to its customer, which directly support environmental stewardship through protecting and improving the ecological resources and beneficial uses of the Santa Clara River estuary. The information in the staff report and this presentation supports the strategic priorities of public safety and the focused area of emergency preparedness and prevention and response. These projects will ensure drought-proof, climate-resilient water supply that will be available during the event of a water shortage stage. So the recommendation this evening for you is to receive this information, and we're here for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Dorrington and staff. Appreciate the information. At this time, are there any council questions or introductory remarks? If not, I will go on to... Oh, Councilmember Campos?
One of my questions is, what is the relationship between 1.9 million gallons per day or per anything with 2,800 gallons? Or, I'm sorry, 2,800 acre-feet?
Acre-feet. The 1.9 million gallons will be the leftover discharge into the estuary, so we won't be diverting that from the estuary, we'll be leaving it into the estuary. The acre-feet is water supply produced through the advanced purification facility, so everything else is diverted to the advanced purification facility to treat and deliver us that acre-footage of water.
So can a million gallons be converted into acre-feet for us to understand these two figures together?
Sure.
They're kind of awkward for me. And if you need a time to do that, that's fine.
I will put it into our calculator.
Also, you mentioned that the project, which we've seen in our lifetime, is multi-generational.
It's multi-generational through construction and through... This will last us for generations. This is a new water supply for the city that will be sustainable throughout time.
So some of the concerns you'll hear tonight are about the multi-generational effect of increasing water rates, and that's become a concern for us from public comments, not just tonight, but throughout. So I'm hoping you can discuss that when we come to that point.
Remind us if we don't.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McReynolds, followed by Deputy Mayor Holter.
Can you go to Slide 19? And there might be a better slide to show this, but is there a way that we can see residential usage versus commercial and/or ag usage?
There is no agricultural usage for the city water, but I can... I have some numbers on this.
You can tell me it's in another presentation later?
I can have it from a report, and I can tell it to you in just a few minutes.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Great. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, staff, for their report. It's a lot of information that we've seen many times over the last five years that I know of exactly, but I wanted to... There was one slide, I think it's Slide 33. It's the funnel going through the different phases of design. It's the 30...
Yes.
This one intrigues me, and I mentioned it last time, but I need to say it again because what I find important as an engineer and as somebody in the trades is it's one thing that this is meant to show how we become more certain as we get closer and closer to fully defining all the variables and all the needs of the project. What's missing in that, and it's kind of hidden behind the funnel to me, is we all know, whoever's done projects, big and small, that the longer something takes, the more variables can be presented that create great risk to the success of any project. So I see that as buried behind that funnel, and it's important because the difference is, in the private sector, we push really, really hard. We try to bypass as much of the noise and bureaucracy as possible to get something done. Oftentimes, government, we're enthralled in it, and things take longer because we have to present 75 times or whatever the case may be. So the longer... The more you elongate each one of these phases, that funnel could actually grow and then go down and then grow again and then go down, is what I see from my own engineering background and experience. So I see that as intriguing, and it's a watchout because a project that could be done in five years, if it grows to being done in 20 years, it becomes almost unpredictable. And because you have no idea what variables, who's going to be in office, what laws, what tariffs, what employees might be out there to do a job. And then the only other thing I want to mention is that when we went to DC and talked to Bureau of Reclamation, we were really cautioned at some of the words we used, and we saw climate resiliency, and we were encouraged to say climate resiliency and to never say climate change. So I would recommend that in our slides, we change those to climate resiliency.
Thank you.
Good point. Thank you. Councilmember Mangone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, staff, for that presentation. Can we go to Slide... I guess 20 would be fine. How do you guys consider, or is it considered, in the future demand, the significant increases in rates? Is that considered here also? So I can assume that, you know, we see 100, 150% increase in rates, the demand... Are you guys... Is that an assumption also that the demand is going to decrease because of the cost of water? And if so, how do you guys factor that in here?
Thank you for your question. I'll let Kevin discuss that a little bit more during the rates discussion, but in general, as far as from a water supply planning perspective, we're not projecting... We're not including any pressures from rates. I will say, in the past droughts, we have implemented drought rates to recoup revenue due to the decreased... Revenue from the decreased water supply order of usage.
Okay. All right. And Slide 25. So I've heard this discussed several times the last couple of years. It's the fourth bullet point down, improving municipal water supply quality. Maybe you guys want to get into it later, but this is a question that I've had several times too, because if we are going to reduce the usage from our two highest-quality sources, can you explain to me how that... How you come to that conclusion?
Thank you, Councilmember Mangone. I can. The water that we will be producing out of the Ventura Water Pier is pure. That's the name. It is the... It's a drinking water quality that exceeds drinking water standards, so we'll be producing pure water. This water will be injected into our groundwater basins, which have a water quality challenge and secondary standards for total dissolved solids. So we will be blending our pure water with this groundwater basin and improving that water quality. And for those of our customers who are in the areas where groundwater quality is used more, Jenny's chart went back, and we showed how we were utilizing more groundwater throughout the city than we have in the past. It's hard water, and the water quality improvement will be that we'll be blending over time and making better water quality, and the goal is to achieve the secondary standards for drinking water.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Campos?
I just wanted to give staff an opportunity to answer my question.
Sure.
Thank you, Councilmember Campos. So 1 million gallons per day equates to 1,120 acre-feet per year. And to answer your question, the reason that staff provides a range for Phase 1A of how much water would be produced between 2,800 acre-feet per year and 3,600 acre-feet per year is that, at the time of the Phase 3 studies, the city was discharging 4.7 million gallons per day to the estuary. And so if we reduce to only 1.9, that means we would divert 2.8 million gallons per day and send that to the advanced water purification facility for treatment. But how much water is actually sent there depends on the amount of wastewater we're creating and the amount of water usage in general. And so that's why staff provides a range between 2,800 and 3,600 acre-feet per year.
Thank you, and I'd like to follow up with this. So the amount that is produced as pure water is significantly less than the amount we're putting into the process. Is that correct?
There is about an 80% recovery through the process, so we're removing the solids that were through the first osmosis process. We're removing those things that cling to water and to make it pure water. So that is the concentrate. That's what will be removed from the facility, so it's about an 80/20. So there is a... You can consider it a loss of water, but it's still a considerable amount of water for the city.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just had a question. You touched on the water quality just a few minutes ago, and that just prompted several... Several folks on the East End have been concerned and have mentioned, you know, is this even going to help folks on the East End? And so I'd like to see if you can address that.
Yes, this is going to help all of our customers in one form or the other, but the groundwater, the East End is primarily groundwater serviced, and we're hoping that in a matter of time, they'll be able to see that their faucets do not get as corroded or their appliances get as clogged up as they do with the hard water. It will provide that water quality benefit.
Great. Thank you. And I don't see any other questions from my colleagues currently, so I'll go ahead and...
Madam Mayor, if I have a minute, we do have the answer for Mr. McReynolds, or Councilmember McReynolds.
Yep. Yeah, so the breakdown between residential and commercial usage changes over time. It's long-term about 60%. Last year's, 2024, was between single-family and multifamily was almost... Was 68% of the total water usage.
Okay, if there are no other questions from my colleagues, I'll go ahead and recognize public comment at this time for this item.
Thank you, Mayor. We have one speaker card submitted for Item 3. Bert Handy, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you.
Bert, you have seated time. You'll have six minutes.
Good evening, council. It was a very good presentation by the staff from Ventura Water, but a few questions. Number one, I didn't hear anything about the state water project and how that's going to be affecting coming in. I believe that that's part of the water they're going to use for blending on the East End. That's another $47 million project at this time with, I believe, a $10 million grant, so it's going to be 37 million at this time. We really don't know how those numbers are going to come out. In regards to going on forward for all the water, the Ventura here is taking historical data. I have seen nothing reflecting the future in regards to what is changing in the basins. Oxnard Basin, like I brought up earlier, they have projects over there where they're going to completely eliminate the overdraft. Ventura is bringing up future projects here to tell you what they are doing. However, you aren't getting any information on anybody else, what they're doing in the future, and I believe that is incumbent on Ventura Water to bring that forward. That is something that could be handled by having somebody from United Water District come over and present to you folks, and that they are basically the ones that are supplying the water and very involved in the processes of what's going on in the Oxnard Basin, the Santa Paula Basin, the Mound Basin, because they supply water to all three. Now, that is something that I believe that you should hear directly from them. In regards to the Santa Paula Basin, the Santa Paula Basin, from my research on the 2025 annual report, shows a reduction in demand from 25,000 acre-feet a year to 21,000 acre-feet a year, which means there is going to be more water available there. That was not brought up here. They're saying we may lose water in Santa Paula. That is not correct. In the Mound Basin, we have a static amount of 4,000 acre-feet a year. The other area that was not brought up is the water off the coast. In the Mound Basin groundwater sustainability plan, the line on that stops at the coastline. They do not... They do not analyze what's off the coast because that is not part of SIGMA. As a result of that, that has never been analyzed or evaluated. And we have 10 miles of aquifers off this coast. It's a continuation of the Mound Basin aquifers. So that is a available source of water that has never been investigated by Ventura Water that I have heard about. Yes, there is historical data on there that they have a problem with saltwater intrusion there. However, in the investigation from the Mound Basin GSA, they found that was one well that was a problem. And they haven't found anything before that or since that time with this problem. So I suggest that that is a much cheaper way of dealing with getting water for Ventura residents right there. And it's right there at the advanced water treatment facility site, which could have wells go right there. And that water, yes, it's harder water. But they could also treat that water and bring it into higher quality and blend it with the existing water to bring up the quality that way instead of taking the excessive cost of treating recycled water from the wastewater treatment plant because it's much more expensive to do that than it is to treat groundwater. Now, think about this. Your groundwater goes up to Bailey Facility right now to treat the water. They do not have to do all the processes they have to do with the water coming out of the wastewater treatment plant. They just treat it as a groundwater and they bring it back. That's what would happen with the water coming out if they had it at the advanced water treatment facility right at Olivas Park at Harbor Boulevard. That has never been investigated. And I'm going to hear a lot of things that say that's not a possible way. But United did an evaluation on that. And they found out that they could possibly get 5,000 acre feet a year down by McGrath Lake. So that is another area. Now, the EBB project is something that MEGU is working on with United. And they're going to be able to provide a lot of water for the base down there. They're wanting to get two weeks of water supply down there. And during that period of time, they're going to actually take the water out of the ground that's bad water. It's called Extraction Barrier and Brackish Water Treatment Plant. This plant basically is taking water out, they're treating it, they're injecting it back into the ground at some points. And they're also going to treat it far enough to be able to be a reliable supply for the MEGU facility. Here in Ventura, we don't have that issue because, as I said, we've got 10 miles of aquifers off the coast. Now, another thing that's going on in the Ventura River. We have that area there. It's a very low designated area for groundwater sustainability area. There is no, currently, anybody taking water out of there. It hasn't been analyzed for a long time. That could be a spot where they could use groundwater to let the people on the avenue or anybody else use it for watering plants, for doing stuff like that without having to treat it. That is available and it's there because the farmers use that. That's another source that would cut down the amount of water that would be needed. It would be very beneficial to the people on the West End. There are a lot of options available. And I suggest you have somebody outside of Ventura Water, evaluate all the sources we have here and give you folks a report as to what is feasible. Because the projects that you had right there, Ms. Dorrington said, there are no projects that are available for under $55 million. I agree. The actual cost on the projects right now to equate to the 55 million is 97 million. We're way over that either way. That needs to be taken out of the factor and figure out what the total cost of all these projects is going to be relative to what we have available to us. Thank you.
Next speaker is Annalisa Mo. Annalisa, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hello, just to check, are you all able to hear me?
We can hear you, yes. And we're on item number three. Go ahead.
Excellent. Thank you so much. My name is Annalisa Mo. My pronouns are she/her. And I am the Associate Director of Science and Policy at Heal the Bay, which is an environmental nonprofit based in Santa Monica. And I wanted to chime in here to talk a little bit about the Pure Water Project and some of the historical context of how Heal the Bay has been involved. A long time ago, back in 2011, Heal the Bay entered into a consent decree with the city along with the Bish Toyo Schumash Foundation to handle some issues around state laws about reducing discharges to the Santa Clara River Estuary and also preventing the unreasonable use and waste of the water that was being discharged there. And the solution that the city came up with through this process to address, you know, these laws of reducing the discharge to the estuary also creates this co-benefit of water supply for Ventura. And, you know, this allows for ecological restoration. It addresses a lot of the initial concerns that Heal the Bay got involved around for restoring the Santa Clara River Estuary, protecting the species that live in this area. But also, again, creating this co-benefit of water supply. And, you know, this investment is comparable or in some cases cheaper than other options. But at the same time, it is providing all of these co-benefits, which really shows the investment that this opportunity provides for. Now, this project is necessary, just frankly, to comply with, you know, our consent decree, to comply with the state laws, to eliminate discharges that are not beneficial, which, you know, it is not in this case. And also, again, to prevent the unreasonable use and waste of that water that comes from not using the water. So as we kind of talk about this project tonight, I do encourage you to support staff recommendations. You know, we have worked with the city through this consent decree process. And they have really done their due diligence in the research that they have presented to you tonight and at previous meetings. And it's very important, there were discussions just a moment ago about, you know, costs changing over time, particularly if inflation and other things occur. So moving forward with it does, you know, lessen some of those variables that might pop up. So again, just encouraging you to support staff recommendations, move forward with this project, make sure that we're coming into compliance with state law and providing this incredible co-benefit of water supply for Ventura. Thanks so much.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you for that. I'll go ahead and bring it back to Council for deliberation. And no action or no motion is required for tonight on this. It is a receive and file, but if you have any final comments, feel free to do so. Councilmember Duran.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you for that incredible presentation and for answering a lot of questions. And then Mr. Handy comes up and I'm like, can you respond to some of the things he was saying? Do you want me to list them?
Yes. Thank you, Councilmember Duran. Yeah, you want to be specific about what you would like me to respond to?
Well, only, I mean, he was talking about the state water project and that that wasn't mentioned. He talked about the Oxnard Basin and the Santa Paula Basin and that there was a reduction in demand in the Santa Paula Basin. He talked about the Mound Basin and on the coast, there was, I think he said 10 wells and only one was really affected by.
Yes, okay. I can, I can address all of those. Okay, so first, for state water project, that project is in progress. We're actually looking to go out for construction in a few months here. That project is designed to improve water quality on the East End as well. However, state water project water is highly uncertain also. It's controlled by many factors out of our control and things that happen in other parts of California. There's projects in progress to update the state water project infrastructure that are uncertain as well. And so we're currently only estimating that we would get up to 2,000 acre feet per year as a reliable source. Because if we're blending it to achieve water quality standards, we need to have a constant supply. So we're up to 2,000, but we're planning for around 1,300 as a sustainable supply. I'd like to talk about the Mound Basin next. So Mr. Handy has mentioned that there is, that the Mound Basin extends offshore, which is correct. It does. And the GSP does consider that as that sustainability of the basin means that there will not be seawater intrusion. And because the aquifer extends offshore, it is susceptible to seawater intrusion. And so you need to have freshwater flow into that area to make sure that water's taking up that space so that the saltwater doesn't replace that, the freshwater. And so you do need some offshore flow. The offshore flow that he's referring to, I think that was in the report, is not in the production aquifers. It's primarily in the shallow alluvial aquifer. And that water is very high in total dissolved solids. Four times higher, in fact, than are the water that we get out of our Mound Basin wells right now, which, as you know, is very high in TDS. And then most of the water that is flowing in that shallow alluvial aquifer offshore is coming from the Santa Clara River. And since the current wastewater plant discharge, discharges into the Santa Clara River Estuary, by removing that discharge and treating it, we actually are reducing the amount of offshore flow in the Mound Basin offshore. I'll take the Santa Paula Basin next. This is like jeopardy. The Santa Paula Basin allocation for the city is governed by judgment. I'll let Miles answer more questions if there's more specifics. But that judgment gives the city a specific allocation. That allocation can be higher as agricultural properties get developed into residential, commercial properties and get annexed to the city. It can also go down if, because the city does not have the highest priority of usage in that basin. If there are other users that come in, agriculture users, that start using more water in that basin or if conditions deteriorate below acceptable levels, then the city's allocation is the first to be cut back. Oxnard Plain. As I mentioned in one of my first slides, the Oxnard Plain Basin is one of the most uncertain allocations that we have. It's also currently a large portion of our water supply, 5,300 acre feet per year out of the 12,000 usage from last year. And so it's a very important supply. And we, due to both the reductions proposed in the GSP and the adjudication, those allocations are very uncertain. There are projects being pursued in the Oxnard Plain Basin by various parties, most notably by, as Mr. Handy mentioned, United Water Conservation District. That project is in the early phases of monitoring and development. They are working with the Navy on that project. The Navy has a large interest in utilizing a portion of that water supply. It's unclear how that project will impact the allocations in the basin and the sustainable yield of the basin. That's to be determined, not by us, but by the Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency and other stakeholders. And we're just one party in the multi, I don't know, thousands of parties in the Oxnard Plain Basin adjudication. And we just do not know how that will shake out.
Madam Mayor, may she follow up with the last thing on that?
Right, I was going to say, it's Deputy Mayor Halter's turn next, but maybe you could follow up and have her finish as well.
It was just Ventura River that was left.
One more. Okay, sorry.
Thank you for the information. If you would continue with the Ventura River, then I have some questions regarding the Mound Aquifer and stormwater runoff.
Okay. So just talk about the uncertainty for why we have the Ventura River?
Basically, because it was said that no one's taking water from the Ventura River?
Oh, we're taking water from Ventura. Yeah. So we have, we currently have two wells in the Ventura River that are active. And those are on, they're pumping water when they can. They're on all the time unless we have met the settlement, the current settlement agreement, the channel keeper, and we have interim order through our ongoing negotiations with other parties. Our current regime is that when the river drops below 5 CFS during a dry year, we have to turn off our pumps. We are pursuing rehabilitation of the subsurface intake structure, which will increase production of the river water during wet years and when the flows are higher. That project is probably going to take at least five years. It may, it will likely include the relocation of that structure outside of the riverbed to improve accessibility to that structure for repairs by our staff, which is part of the reason why it has not, why it has been out of service since 2020. And so, yes, we are utilizing water supply from the Ventura River. And we are actively negotiating with other parties to continue that usage by also being conscious to environmental issues and other users of the river.
A couple other additional questions is, in regards to the quality of water in the Mound Basin, would it be more cost effective to treat that hardened water more so than the wastewater from Ventura?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. The treatment process for treating groundwater is the same that we will be employing at Ventura Water Pier.
Takes the same time, same effort, same energy?
Yes.
Okay, and then.
Councilmember Halter, could I just expand on that answer a little bit? So the other issue here is that the city is required to divert the water, it discharges to the Santa Clara River Estuary and put it to beneficial reuse. And so it's not just a matter of, is there a potentially cheaper source? It's, we have this consistent supply of water, a large volume of water that we will need to put to beneficial reuse on a constant basis. So we have to do that first before the city can look at other potential options for lower water supply sources.
Great. Thank you for the clarity. The other thing, though, is just last night, I didn't save those notes from last night, but it was, I remember 119,000. And I think it's 119,000 cubic feet of water passing a point every minute or every second on Olivas Park. Okay, so I'm looking at that and thinking, gosh, if we had more settling ponds out there to just divert water for five minutes in those high water volume situations, is that something we do already? Is that, it just seems like that makes sense to then have that go into our different aquifers?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Halter. I'll start and then if Ms. Trever or Ms. Dorrington want to supplement. But a United Water Conservation District is the primary local agency that takes advantage of stormwater flows. So they have the diversion off the Santa Clara River and they have their settling ponds off the 118 where they put the water to recharge the Oxnard Plain groundwater basin. In the city of Ventura, we have a shallow aquifer just below the surface. But then below that is a clay layer that underlies most of the city. And so in the EIR that evaluated the Ventura Water Supply Projects, stormwater capture and infiltration was evaluated. And while in small areas throughout the city, it can be beneficial environmentally, it actually won't create a large amount of additional water supply in our groundwater basins right under the city.
I see.
And so that's why it didn't move forward as one of the potential projects in the EIR. And that's why Ventura Water Pier moved forward. We do get some mound front recharge from rainfall into the Mound Basin and then some right down near the Santa Clara River. But again, looking at it as a big water supply project for the city, our experts didn't deem it as a viable alternative.
Excellent. I just want to point out that as somebody that does landscaping, is I am constantly in awe at how much the city of Ventura has conserved water over the years. It's pretty phenomenal feat, what all the citizens of our community has done and all the things that we know about, whether it's mulching and keeping the soil moist because of mulching and thus greening our neighborhoods and our hillsides by a limited amount of water that isn't evaporating so much. It's all very fascinating, but I just don't see, I feel that we've reached a very critical point where it's not going to be so easy to conserve much more without dramatically lowering the quality of life for all of us. And I think if we all wanted to live in Arizona or Nevada and have rock all around us, then I think it'd be. then I think it'd be a lot cheaper for us to live there. But I get concerned as we look at climate resiliency and the heating of our ground and what happened during the drought with people putting so much rock in their neighborhoods in North Hollywood and the valley, increasing the temperature of those communities measurably and significantly in a very short period of time. There's a lot of parameters to look at, and, but I, I'm very proud of our community for doing what we've done, but knowing that I don't think we could count on much more conservation in the future. If you have a thought.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any other information? Okay. Thank you for the presentation, and I, I think for me in particular, Slide 14 was just very eye opening, again, in terms of deja vu, where history will continue to repeat itself unless we do something different. And I think that's essentially what I heard tonight, and so I just really appreciate the historical perspective, the information given, and thank you for all the work that you all have been doing. Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number four, which is 2025 Water and Wastewater Rate Study Update: Revised Financial Plans Rate Structure Evaluations and Affordability Framework. I don't know if you have someone else switching out, but I know you're staying there for a while.
Yes, thank you again, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and City of Ventura and council members. Again, for the record, I'm Gina Dorrington, the General Manager of Ventura Water. I'm joined this evening with our financial water and wastewater rate consultant, Kevin Kostick, and he is the Senior Manager of Raftellis. We also have Nick Kennedy with us at Raftellis. Available online, we do have our financial advisors, NHA, Greg Hill and Christian Spurgier, available for any questions regarding our financial planning activities and future outlook. And then up here for any additional legal is our Senior Assistant City Attorney, Miles Hogan, and Jennifer Trebo for the Assistant General Manager over Water Resources. I do want to, before I hand it over to Kevin, and he'll hand it back to me, I do want to reiterate, tonight is not a rate adoption, it's not a rate setting, we're not giving a final acceptance of a rate. We're taking a look at where we have come so far in our rate study and our financial planning, and we do have a lot of material, so I appreciate your time. And Kevin, if you're ready, you can, I'll give you the control.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Kevin Kostick from Raftellis, glad to be with you tonight. This is the outline of our presentation tonight. We'll be going through the long-term financial projections for both the water and the wastewater utility enterprises. We'll review the rate structure modifications under consideration this cycle, and as Gina pointed out, we'll review an affordability study framework that's concurrent with the rate study. Just briefly, our work is a bit more than just the rate study. We also will be supporting staff and the outreach consultants through the 218 process and those general customer outreach and communication support. I mentioned we do have a standalone affordability assessment, a standalone study, and then longer term supporting staff through the Ventura Water Pier process through construction. So our rate study process starts with a rate setting framework. We look at our financial goals, our pricing objectives as far as it relates to our rates on any alternative rate structures for evaluation. We've gone through that with the Water Commission. We started back in November of 2024 and went through a pricing objectives exercise with the Water Commission. We reviewed those results in January with the Commission, and they help inform the trajectory of the rate study as it relates to the financial planning piece that we'll review tonight, as well as rate structure alternatives. So we will see results of our financial planning exercise where we're looking over the long term, over a 10-year look, evaluating our operating environment and our capital projects, revenues and expenses, rate revenues, currently projected expenditures, and identifying different scenarios to evaluate. The next step is rate design. That starts with a cost of service analysis where we, we look at both the water and the wastewater system, look at the costs that are incurred in the operating environment, the system itself, the capital infrastructure, allocate those costs to different system components and the users that demand certain water and wastewater services on those systems. Then we develop the rate alternatives and the proposed rates themselves, calculate customer impacts. And then steps four into five are about the adoption process. So we'll document the study in a comprehensive study report, start to finish, from budgeted numbers, the math, all the way through to final rates. That's reviewed by staff, by legal, and then we can proceed with noticing customers and the rate adoption process. So we have a minimum 45-day protest period where customers are noticed, they receive a notice that tells them the basis for the rates, their right to protest, the time, place and date of the public hearing. After that protest period, and we come to the public hearing, that's when your council consider the adoption of rates. Oh, sorry.
Yes, let me, thank you, Kevin. I am going to remind the computer to reboot later. So there is a lot of conversation about the rates are going up because of specific projects, and I wanted to just give some background of what rates actually support and what we talk about when the rate payer is going through these rate cycles. Rates go to supporting the water and wastewater services for the city of Ventura. The rate payer is paying for clean, reliable service and environmental protection. Rates cover the cost of managing and administering the water and wastewater systems to support public health and safety. Rates go to cover the operations and maintenance of the city's water and wastewater system, along with supporting the men and women who continue to perform those duties on a daily basis. On the water side, rates support the operation and maintenance of three waste, or three water treatment facilities, close to 400 miles of water pipeline, 27 tanks and reservoirs, 19 pump stations, 10 wells, over 11,000 valves and nearly 3,500 fire hydrants, as well as the dedicated 66 certified professionals and personnel it takes to run all of that. On the wastewater side, rates go to support the wastewater facility trading over seven and a half million gallons a day, over 300 miles of sewer line with 11 sewer lift stations and six, over 6,700 manholes with 47 certified employees to ensure operations and compliance. Rates go to address the city's water and infrastructure, water and wastewater infrastructure needs, such as replacing and upgrading aging infrastructure, meeting current and new regulatory requirements, meeting all water quality objectives for both public and environmental health, and ensuring that the future of water supply needs are met for the city of Ventura. Rates do go to fund capital improvement projects to meet the city needs and improve water quality service. Some projects are large, long, multi-year projects that can span out costs over multiple rate cycles, while other projects are shorter term and can impact, and can impact rates for only a few years. One of the city's large multiply year, multiply year projects within this rate study is the State Water Interconnect, which you heard Jennifer talk about earlier. This is the city's infrastructure project that will bring in our state water allocation when available, adding another water source to its portfolio and providing a water quality benefit to our customers. One of the biggest infrastructure projects the city has ever undertaken is the Ventura Water Program, Ventura Water Pier Program. This program will bring the city into compliance with state and federal law, improve water quality and secure locally owned water supply that is sustainable and resilient. Now that we have listed what the water and wastewater rates cover, I'll handle it back to Kevin to talk about the rate structure.
So the staff report for this item identified a handful of rate structure modifications that are under consideration this cycle, but I thought it would be helpful to start with the many things that were changed the last rate cycle. So that was in 2020, adopted in 2021. The first is, when we think about our rate revenue, we have both fixed and variable sources of revenue for both water and wastewater, meter-based fixed charges on the water side, account charges on the wastewater side. Those currently recover approximately 30% through fixed sources and 70% through variable sources. That's a trade-off between having stable revenues and having affordability of service via a customer's ability to control their own bill. Residential tiers, at the time, there were four tiers for residential users, and that was simplified to three. At the time, that was still a, a structure that was representative of drought conditions, and so the first tier was very modest. So not only were, were the tiers simplified from four to three, but more water was allocated in that first tier for residential customers. We eliminated the differential between inside and outside city rates. The wastewater rate structure was maintained as a fixed and variable structure for all users, meaning that there are flow charges for all users, including residential customers, which again is a desire for a customer to be able to have some control over their bill. Related to that, for the sewer flow rates, there was a removal of what was referred to as the determination period. So it used to be that the flow charges were based on metered water use, but based on the average winter water use of a customer, that would then set the flow charges for the following year. That was removed so that it's subject simply to metered water use, subject to a cap or a maximum. And then lastly, on the sewer charge side, there was the elimination of a legacy standalone estuary protection charge, which was in relation to the project before you, Ventura Water Pier, or the, what was at the time, a proposed project. So it was funding that. That was simply rolled into the wastewater rates themselves. So those were many of the things that were changed last time around. And then let's look at the current rates, first for water, get a lay of the land of what actually goes into a customer's bill. So on the table on the left, those again are the fixed charges that vary by meter size. Most single-family residential customers have a three-quarter inch connection, that's a charge of 24, 25, and these are all current rates as of July of this year. On the water use rates, we have several different classes of customers with tiers for our residential users, single-family and multifamily, where multifamily receives water tiered by dwelling unit, right, where we have master metered accounts or master metered connections that might have multiple dwelling units on one connection. Then we have a non-residential rate, which is really commercial users, an irrigation rate, those are dedicated landscape irrigation, and then reclaimed for current recycled water. So again, most single-family customers at the three-quarter inch mark, and most single-family customers, again, falling within tier one or slightly into tier two on average. What you'll see in this presentation largely reflects eight units of water use per month for that typical single-family user. Similar setup on the wastewater side, with current rates fixed, again, a monthly charge for all users, single-family currently at $20.08 per month. And then the flow charges, they're based on the customer type, and then within commercial, we have different categorizations based on the, not just the flow, not just the wastewater that's generated, but the strength of the wastewater, right? An office generates wastewater that's a very different strength than a restaurant or an industrial user or a brewery. So we have very distinct classes within the commercial group. We're going to turn to the policy objectives that we walked through, or we went through, the exercise and the review with the Water Commission earlier in the year, because again, that helps inform any structural changes that we want to entertain this cycle. So stepping through all of these objectives, you see the eight primary objectives that we have on the right there. The exercise for Water Commission included sub-objectives to some of these, these key objectives. So there were 22 in total that we asked them to rank. The results were largely consistent across commissioners, but also with the prior rate study, and you see the top three there. Rate stability, that's really about stable rates over time. Financial stability, so that's within a year, we want to make sure that we are generating sufficient revenues. And then affordability of service, and what's bolded in each one are the keys that we try and fold into the things that we want to evaluate in any structural changes. So for instance, on the first one, evaluating our fixed or base charges, right? 30% of, 30% of our rate revenue is coming from, from fixed sources. Now that's a trade-off with affordability, obviously, because the, the higher the fixed charges or the share of fixed charge revenue recovery, the less control a customer will have over their bill. So some trade-offs there as well. Homing in a bit more on the existing rate structure, and this is specific to single-family residential, we have some specifics here. So the first tier again is up to 600 cubic feet. That's a billing unit, it's 748 gallons of water. So the first tier allot's up to 600 cubic feet, or roughly 4,500 gallons. That's largely indoor use, and if we look at the single-family residential class, 64% of all of their water use is in tier one. We've heard it several times tonight, Ventura Water customers are conservers, they're low water users, they have been for the better part of the last decade at least. The second tier is seven units up to 1,200 cubic feet. That represents largely seasonal needs as relates to irrigation. It might be larger homes, but generally that's seasonal irrigation needs within the single-family class, that's another 24%. And then greater than 1,200 cubic feet, that's our tier three, and that's only 12% of water use. And that's largely consistent with the last rate study. So there's some discussion in the previous item about potentially how demand patterns have changed as prices have increased. This is just about identical to the 2020 study as far as the percentage of use within each one of our tiers. Onto the fixed rate revenue item, so this is the second, let me go back actually, I'm sorry. What I missed on the previous slide here is that in talking with the Water Commission in both May and June, the desire is to maintain the tiers as we have them. We had a substantial change in the last rate structure, we have consistent demand patterns, we don't want to ratchet tiers back down, we don't want to modify, we like what we have. So the recommendation from Water Commission is to maintain what we have there for residential users. Thank you. So the second item relates to fixed rate revenue, and what you see here is a survey of, some are neighboring, some are peer agencies, a lot of coastal water providers and similar cities, and we surveyed to say what revenue recovery or other like agencies recovering through their rates. And you see that it is as low as 10% for folks like the city of Santa Cruz, all the way up to two-thirds, 66% for Carpinteria Valley just up the road. A good group of agencies though fall right in that kind of 25 to 35% mark. Ventura is right at 30%, right in the middle. And in discussing, discussing this with Water Commission, the direction is to evaluate at the current 30%, but also to evaluate lower revenue recovery at 25%. That would be trading off a bit of revenue stability year to year for affordability of service and mitigating rate impacts, particularly to lower users, right? Because for a low water use customer, much more of their bill is in the meter charge, it's in the fixed component of their bill. The third item relates to the wastewater flow charge. So again, we, we maintained what we had last time around, which is a fixed and a variable rate structure for residential users. That wastewater flow, the maximum was reduced down last rate study from 15 and 12 for single-family and multifamily to what we currently have, 12 and 10. The desire is to reduce further to 10 per single-family residential and eight for multifamily. What that's going to do is improve the fairness between the, the relationship between water use and wastewater generation as it relates to, to water users. So those are the three rate structure modification options under consideration this time around with the Water Commission. Now, getting to proposed rates is this three-step process, and, and we provide this slide for two parts. First is to transition from the previous discussion on the rate structure modifications, but also to convey that what we're talking about tonight is, are the results of the financial plan. The financial plan is where we determine the total costs of the water system and the wastewater system, the total cost of providing service. The cost of service analysis again is where we apportion those costs. We look at the various system components, all the user classes, and we apportion those costs fairly based on costs incurred and usage patterns. The last step is in rate design, how we recover those costs. So again, what we're discussing tonight are not final rates, we are only discussing the results of the financial plan and translating those into bill impacts should the existing rates be in place, but we still- bill impacts should the existing rates be in place, but we still have steps two and three to come. So financial drivers, some of these will be familiar from the past presentation. At all times, we have inflationary pressure on both our operating costs and our capital costs. That is true in life generally. It's exceptional for utilities where those inflationary pressures are generally greater than experienced in just the CPI that we all know. So both on an operating basis and on capital projects, we expect to see, and we have seen over the past 10 or 20 years at least, much higher inflation for utility costs than general inflation. The water demand forecast comes into play as well. We saw a previous slide, you're going to see one in just a moment here of looking back to 2015 or so, and then through the rate horizon on what we're projecting as far as water demands for users, and then how those water demands are, how is water served based on the source of supply available? So that's another driver. The existing sources, the bringing online of new sources, and the change between those sources over time, because each source has very distinct costs. The capital improvement program itself comes into play, so not just how capital costs are changing, but the magnitude of capital costs year to year. So the CIP program for both utilities, as well as Ventura Water Pure cost projections come into play, and then kind of wrapped up in all of that are financing costs. So a large degree of our capital is financed through the WFIIA loans for Water Pure on future revenue bonds, and those have debt service coverage obligations. We have to generate no less than a certain amount of net revenue to be able to service those bonds. So going through the water demand forecast, going back to 2016, what we see is from 2016 to 2020, kind of modest declines in demand. In the previous presentation, we saw how in '21 and '22, we saw a bump up in demands, right? In dry years, our demands increase, and then in wet years, 2023 and '24, we actually have, we have depressed demand. And we've seen a decline in demand over time, and we've seen a hardening at lower levels. In 2025, we've had a not-quite-normal year, a below-average, kind of a strange year here, but an improvement in water demands relative, at least to 2023 and '24, and you see those projections going forward. Now, the dash blue line is this rolling five-year average of the Comprehensive Water Resource Report. And in the future, what you see is the trajectory of the five-year average change, and then the blue lines, that's the projected demand, because it has not just the rolling average, but expected new connection growth development, which adds water sales and water demand in absolute terms. So that's our projection, and that's used within the rate, the rate study and the financial forecast. So I mentioned, now you have to turn to how do we satisfy those demands? What are the sources of supply? And those sources of supply are many here, and we're showing from fiscal year 2025, the year just closed, 2026 is our current year, and then the five years in the rate horizon. And so what we see are really the changes over time. First, in 2029, we see a partial year of state water project water estimated to come online, so a partial year in that year, and then a full 1,300 acre feet or so in 2030 and '31. Then I'll draw my, draw your attention down to the bottom, which is water produced from Foster Park, from the Ventura River, an increase after a project completed in 2030, excuse me. And then lastly, in 2031, Water Pure coming online, and how that changes by reducing groundwater production overall and reliance on casitas. So let's turn to the results, and the first thing we'll do is orient on the tables and charts. So the table on the left shows us the fiscal year, then the overall revenue increase required, we're talking about the water enterprise here. So this is the gross rate revenue increase, not rates, but gross rate revenue increase. And then for full transparency, any additional debt that is proposed within this plan for future capital projects. What's bolded are our rate years, fiscal year 2027 to 2031, and then we show an additional series of years through 2035, simply for planning purposes. And at the bottom, they're showing cumulative increases. These are compounded cumulative increases, first for the five-year term of the rates, and then the longer term. Top right chart shows, I should say that we have two key charts. So we have projected ending cash balance, that's cash on hand, cash in reserves, and then our calculated debt service coverage. So on the top right, we're showing our ending cash balance for the water funds operating in capital, and the, the blue shows the projected ending balances, the red dash line is the reserve policy target, which is 90 days of operating cash plus a year's worth of forward-looking capital based on a 10-year. So this plan increases revenues to the water utility by 11% per year for the next five years, and that allows us to, not quite, but in some years maintain that reserve policy, and in some years ride just below it, trading off rate impacts for achieving that adopted policy. Still sufficient cash on hand to mitigate risks operationally and to fund the capital projects. And when we end this 10-year look out to 2035, you see we end just above the policy target at roughly 40 million. The bottom right chart, again, is a bond coverage test. So as a condition of borrowing, we have to generate enough net revenues to repay our debt service. That dash line is at 1.2, so that means for every million dollars in debt service, we need to generate 1.2 million dollars in net revenues, revenues less operating expenses. So the blue line shows that calculated coverage relative to our minimum or required coverage, the dash red line. So again, we're showing bill impacts based on those 11% increases that you saw on the previous slide. These are illustration-only, because again, the financial plan does not equal the rates. After this step, we have to apportion those costs, and any of those rate modification options that I presented will be considered and flow through to the final rates. So this is illustration-only, but it's illustrative of the current rate schedule as though they were simply increased across the board at 11% per year. This is a typical bill for a single-family residential customer with a three-quarter inch meter and 800 cubic feet of water use per period. That's roughly the annual average of the class. That current bill is just shy of $60, $59.85, and we show the current bill, the projected bill, then the year-to-year impact, that's the year-to-year change in the bill, and then the cumulative relative to today in fiscal 2026. And so what we see is that current bill by the end of the term, by 2031, goes from roughly $60 to roughly $100, about a $41 increase. We'll step through the same progression of slides on wastewater and largely the same drivers, the same types of inflationary pressures on our operating costs and the capital environment. The CIP program, particularly long-term for wastewater comes into play. We have not just that CIP, but obviously Water Pure and membrane bioreactor costs. And then, again, we're largely financing those capital costs, and we need to be able to generate sufficient revenues to be able to borrow for those projects. Same table and same charts as with water. For wastewater, what we're looking at is an 18% overall increase required in 2027, 17 in '28, 17 in '29, 14, and then 12. Now, you, what you might notice is thereafter, we kind of have to slam on the brakes, 3% per year projected thereafter, and that's because we need to generate sufficient revenues in the next five years to be able to execute the projects as they are, to be able to borrow to execute those projects. You see reserves, the top right chart are healthy, that some, in some years, that includes remaining proceeds from debt. We draw down those reserves over time so that we're near minimums in the out years. Similarly, with, with the coverage test, we need to make sure that we're generating sufficient revenues, and you see that declining coverage as more debt is incurred to finance these capital projects over time. And then the same time horizon for these hypothetical across-the-board bill impacts, the current bill for, again, single-family, eight units of water per month. On the wastewater side, that bill is just shy of $58 currently. The projected bill through to 2031 would be projected at $120, a cumulative bill increase of roughly $61 over those six years. Most customers are combined service, so they're both water and wastewater users. So we did want to show what that combined bill looks like. So currently, the bill is just shy of $118. The end of the horizon would be $220, roughly a $102 increase in the combined bill for a typical customer. At a recent meeting, I know that there was a discussion on understanding what maximum costs could be related to Water Pure and the membrane bioreactor costs. Staff went back and identified a range of costs based on industry standards, based on each project component and where they are in, in phasing, to identify what that variance could be on the higher end and the lower end. And so what you see is a, a low range of potential impacts, a high range of impact, of potential impacts, and then the expected. And the expected is what I just presented in the previous slides and what is flowing through into the rate study itself. This is the most likely or expected cost estimate based on the current scope, current assumptions, and current available information. So if we look at water, now showing the increases in revenue in percentage terms on the left, the bill impacts on the right, and now you see what we're stepping through is a low range, the expected range, and the high. So for water, if the low range of the project comes to pass, then those increase, those increases could be reduced down just south of 9% per year, relatively to the 11% that I presented. At the high end, they could be as high as 15%. And then you see what those bills, the bill would look like between the low, the expected, and the high range. So when we get out to 2031, that's a difference, $91 for that bill on the low end, up to $120 on the high end. Again, what was presented was that expected estimate at roughly $101. Same for the wastewater side. So here, the low range would yield increases required at 13.5% per year, and on a higher range, we'd be looking at 20% for the first three years, and then 18 in years four and five. And then again, that bill, when we look out to the end of this rate cycle in 2031, the low range yields a bill of roughly $109, and the high end up to 140. And lastly, again, to, we know that most customers are combined service, so we wanted to show what that combined bill could look like at the, the range of estimates. So looking all the way out to the, the end of 2031, low range at 200, high range up to 260. We're going to pivot to the affordability assessment study, and as it relates to utility, water and wastewater affordability, that, we have several challenges, but one challenge is simply defining what we mean to be utility affordability or affordability of service. We have here a series of quotes or definitions pulled from a variety of sources, just to try and indicate that point, which is there are some definitions that relate more to the community or the community's ability to pay. Other definitions talk about the typical customers and the average water users. Some are about essential water services, so lower income and necessary water use. And so the first is about defining affordability. The second question we have to ask ourselves is how we measure affordability? And so to get at both the definitional and the measurement, what we intend to do is to measure across a series of what are referred to as residential indicators. Some of these indicators are, are legacy items growing out of longstanding EPA guidance, some are more recent from academics, from thought leaders, from industry. So looking across a suite of indicators that are representative sometimes of lower income and essential use, some considering more novel approaches, like how many hours at minimum wage does it take to pay for your water and wastewater service, and then looking at the service, within the service area at the neighborhood level or the census tract level. We'll try and relate those indicators as well, more qualitatively, thinking about the burden in kind of a low, medium, high sense, and again, we can, we hope to visualize that across the service area and within neighborhoods. And then considering other qualitative indicators, like best practices on rate structuring that provide the best outcome on affordability, tiered rates and price differentials, the share of fixed versus variable percentage of a customer's bill, what are the utilities' rate policy, excuse me, the rate and non-rate policies around things like late payments and delinquencies and shut-offs, and customer assistance programs. One more. So our, this lays out in more, more detail our proposed approach. So again, we want to look at a suite of indicators across our users. We want to relate that to actual water use, right? So we have customer billing data. We have service, we know where the service is, we know what the actual water use is, we can relate that to both actual water use data and publicly available data. And then we can compare those in point-in-time affordability estimates in the, in the service area, and then also attempt to project those out based on reasonable estimates. Again, visualizing at the census tract or the neighborhood level to try and see, do we have current affordability concerns, or if we project, may we have affordability concerns in the future? Again, the goal of this study is to provide a baseline, right? We want to understand the, the environment now as far as affordability of service and to be able to inform policies and decision-making in the future. And then as far as it relates to outputs, we have several there. I think I would highlight the second and the third bullet, which, one is defining kind of critical threshold values, right? Again, to inform future decision-making. And then secondarily, or maybe not secondarily, but second, is to identify neighborhoods where, again, affordability is a concern either now or in the near term.
So we have heard from the public, and we understand that any changes in costs to anything right now can be very scary, and no one should have to choose between paying their water bill and putting food on the table. We do offer a customer assistance program, and if a Ventura Water customer is having difficulty paying their bill, they can enroll in the customer assistance program, and this provides a 50% discount on the water services portion of the bill. They can go and fill out an application at venturawater.net or call our customer care representatives at 805-677-6500. They will need a proof of eligibility in the care program with Southern California Edison or Southern California Gas, and an ID or driver's license. This program is funded through late payments collected through the water bills, and is currently budgeted to accommodate 400 customers. And let me walk you through what this looks like for a customer in the program. On the right-hand side, you see a meter charge, and this is a single-family residential customer using a five-unit or HCF of water. Their three-quarter inch fixed meter charge is a $24.25 charge. 50% of that is $12.13. That $12.13 is discounted from what would have been the total water and wastewater bill of $87.13 for a reduction, and a total bill of $75. Currently, we have 367 customers enrolled, and we've increased the budget this fiscal year from $50,000 to fund this program to $70,000. We acknowledge that there are challenges in administering this program and reaching out to all customers that out to all customers that could use a customer assistance program. Many low-income customers live in rental or multifamily units where the bill, the water bill, goes to the property owner and not the individual user. Ventura Water has been exploring ways to outreach to customers through various mediums and creating a partnership with the Southern California Edison Utility to automatically enroll those customers already receiving assistance through them. To continue to communicate to the citizens of Ventura what's going on with their rates, we have several ways in which we're getting out the message. We have, to date, conducted five Water Commission meetings focused on the discussion of rates and have two meetings planned for August. We have our communications through mailers, Bill inserts, our pipeline newsletter, and social media, and our website. We have an outreach booth, as you saw previously, we were at the Fourth of July event. And so look for us around various events of the city to communicate what the impacts are. And we will start scheduling presentations with our community councils to give them an overview and a presentation similar to this about what their rate impacts will be. As Kevin discussed earlier, we're here this evening to gather feedback from you. We will incorporate that feedback and make necessary adjustments to the model. We will then take that update to the Water Commission at a special meeting Thursday night, August 7th, and again, on our regular Water Commission meeting on August 25th. We will be back with fully-developed rate model and proposed rates to the council on September 23 for the authorization of the rate process with the goal of a public hearing adoption on December 9th. The recommendations in this presentation support the strategic priorities for the city council through the priority of infrastructure with a focus of continuing to maintain and improve the conditions of roads, water, storm drains, and parks. The strategic priority of public safety focusing on the area of emergency preparedness, prevention, and response, and strategic priority of climate change and environmental stewardship with the focus area of public input, community engagement, and accountability. The recommendations this evening before you are to receive the staff report and the oral presentation from Raftellus Consultants on the new 2025 Water and Wastewater Rate Study Process. Tonight, we are requesting feedback on the potential water and wastewater rate structure modifications in the following areas. Residential water tiers. The Water Commission voted to maintain the current residential tier structure, but we could require feedback. Fixed revenue recovery. The Water Commission confirmed that Raftellus will model total fixed revenue recovery for water and wastewater at a 30%, our current level, and a 25%, a lower level to support affordability. And the residential wastewater flow charge maximum. The Water Commission voted to reduce the residential wastewater flow cap to 10 units per month for single-family residential customers and eight units per month for multifamily residential dwelling units, and provide feedback on the affordability study framework. And we are available for questions. And there's some glossary of terms.
Wow, thank you so much for all the information. Really appreciate it. Are there any council questions right now? Deputy Mayor Halter?
Great, that was a mouthful. Thank you very much, staff. Okay, or glass full, I should say. Just wondering, starting with something simple, is on, I think it's slide 24, in regards to the breakdown of water sources. Yeah, and looking at on 2031, the year 2031, the significant reduction of water purchase from Casitas, Lake Casitas, that's our most pure water that we currently have, I think, in our system. Are we going to be required to reduce our purchase from that facility? Or is that also very expensive water, just out of curiosity?
Thank you, Councilman Halter, for your question. So these sources of supply projections are just that, they're projections, and they're in the realm of, in the rate study. So when we're projecting demands, and then which water supplies we're going to use to meet those demands, we can put those costs of those supplies into the financial plan. And so we're looking out five years. We're, in this case, assuming that there's no drought conditions, and we're also assuming that the new water supplies are online. And so, given that, we're looking at priorities of maximizing our Foster Park or Ventura River water usage first, and then, and using the Ventura Water Pure and State Water project, which are both to improve water quality. And so then that leaves our groundwater supplies and Casitas. And so for, we're balancing those groundwater supplies on availability, water quality, and regulatory issues, legal issues. And so then that leaves, the remainder is Casitas water. And so we're not being required to reduce our purchase of Casitas, it's just that in a normal year, when they're, these other, when Ventura River water supplies are not reduced, then we don't need as much Casitas water with these new water supplies online.
Okay. But if that water was the most affordable and the cleanest, I would think that we'd want to take as much as we can?
So yes, it is currently, of our current water supplies, it is our most expensive by a factor of two or three, depending on the supply.
Can I move on here? Is the operating costs, the increased operating costs associated with water pure, that's all taken into consideration? Okay, and I think that's broken down somewhere.
Yes, the operational costs are included in the financial plan, in the 10-year financial plan, and we will see a smaller portion of that hit the rate cycle at the end of the rate cycle.
Okay. And for the sake of time, let my colleagues speak. I wanted to ask, after listening to a great presentation, a lot of information, it takes me back to some very basic questions. Okay, so bear with me. It seems to me that if possible, if it was possible to determine how many people live in a household, then some may gallons in the lowest cost rate upfront would be allowed per person, you know, for basic living. Because I don't think we have that information, so then we go to single-family homes. Single-family homes vary a lot. And there's single-family homes of 600 or 800 square feet, that's still a single-family home that may house a family of eight, you know? And so I'm looking at, and then I look at the fact that in downtown and midtown Ventura, one of the things I love the most is that we have 600 and 800 square foot homes next to 3000 and 4000 square foot homes, and they're all a single family. But I would think that if there's a way to determine the potential occupancy of each one of those homes, you would be able to grant more relief to those that were living very modestly, is the best way to say it. Any thoughts on that?
I can, thank you for the question. I can answer with a few numbers or a few data points. Within the city, multifamily dwelling units are, on average, about 2.1 occupants per household dwelling unit. Single-family is about 2.8 or 2.9. So, you know, we know that households generally don't have fractional people, but two and a half to three people per household. Translating that tier-one water, six units per month, yields about 150 gallons per day. So if you don't want to think in terms of people per household, we can say, per connection, to stay within tier-one, you could use up to 150 gallons per day. Oh, and this is helpful information as well. So this is based on efficiency standards currently. The state efficiency standard is 47 gallons per capita per day, that's GPCD. The second row there are the numbers I just tried to remember. And then average days of service on a bill, so you get to roughly 4,000 gallons per single-family user, roughly 3,000 gallons per month per multifamily user. Now, this is efficient indoor use.
Yes. I guess my only thing, and I'm over time, so I just would leave it at this, is that...
The interpreters, yeah. Apologies, we're having a little bit of difficulty.
Okay. It was just the fact that there's definitely neighborhoods in our community that house a lot more people than 2.7 or 2. whatever. And I'm just trying to recognize that and figure out, how do we accommodate and keep their water bill lower, since some of them, I mean, I know over on the avenue where my business is at, there's a lot of people per home, whereas some of us, maybe on the hillside and stuff, may only be that 2.7, you know, or 2.17. So I don't know how we go about doing that, but if there's a way to determine that. And then you have the ADUs as part of the other issue that comes into play as well. So I'd like to see more analysis of that, because I think that would be the fairest thing to do, if there's a way to. In lieu of not doing that, not, you know, have that information, I understand the complexity. But nonetheless, that's my comments right now.
Thanks. Thank you. Councilmember Duran, followed by Councilmember Campos.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for that presentation. Bond debt coverage, can you explain, is that a bond that we already have, or is that a bond that we're going to get?
That is a combination of both. It's actually both of those things. So both utilities currently have debt on the books with specific bond indentures and requirements to generate net revenues of no less than X. That is true for current debt on the books and for future debt. So it does apply to both current and future borrowings. And it considers both. So at a given point in time, the utility has a certain amount of debt on the books. Some issues are then retired, additional issues are issued to finance future projects. So that's a combination of debt on the books now and any planned debt in the future.
Okay. So this is, this would be a bond that we would have to approve down the road, or a vote, or of the people, or what? Help me understand, future bond?
Right. So the rate is meant to also help towards that future bonding, that we have that coverage there.
And what I would add is two things. First is, we're talking about revenue bonds that are specific to the utility, so they're backed by the revenues of the enterprise, not the city, they're not general obligation bonds. The second is that we do have the city's municipal advisors, NHA, online for any specific, more specific answer, if they could provide that for you.
And Councilmember Duran, to answer the second part of your question, those would be approved by city council.
Okay. Thank you so much. What's the rate on those bonds?
Any proposed bonds, future bonds, the assumption is a 5% interest rate and a 30-year term. That's what you use for planning purposes, with a level repayment.
That's what you use for planning purposes? The customer assistance program, thank you for thinking that through. 400 customers is the max, right, roughly, based on how much money is left in that pot?
Yes, we're observing how many customers we can get into the door. So we actually had a waitlist in the last fiscal year, so we increased that amount, and it's estimated to be approximately 400. We can come back for more consideration, adding to that budget if we reach 400, and we have more people that join the list.
Thank you. And just to be clear, it's half, 50% of the water only, not the wastewater, correct?
Correct. It's the water side of the fixed charge of the meter service.
Not to be Debbie Downer or gloom and doom, but what happens if a rate payer can't pay?
And that's where we're exploring other ways that we can try to help. There's, conservation has done a great job, and that's one way. We're looking at affordability, giving the customers perhaps a little more flexibility in that variable charge so that they can have a lower rate and ratchet down. But I do have some, we do have some ideas that we're trying to run through. We're trying to find out where the need is and what that demographic is, and working with other departments of what they know the housing needs are. And, you know, looking at consumer behavior, one of the biggest costs one might be paying in water is actually not to the Ventura Water Department, but paying for bottled water. And we're outreach-ing, trying to help our customers understand that they can trust the water that's coming into their facility, into their homes, and that is much cheaper water than going out and buying bottled water every time they go out, so they could save on a grocery bill and use the water that's coming to their home at a lower cost.
So are you saying that the water is pure enough that you wouldn't need necessarily a reverse osmosis system, like some people are spending extra money on right now, $25, $35, $40 a month for a system in there we can drink right out of the tap?
The water that comes to your home meets all federal and state drinking water standards, and it is monitored continually and daily. And we report all of those results, and they can be found on the website through our customer consumer confidence reports. The customers that have the reverse osmosis, it's an aesthetic. It's, if you prefer the taste of the water, if you're concerned about the mineralization in your water, and we're hoping that with the Ventura Water Pure program, they'll see a better water quality coming to their homes. But overall, the water that we spend money on to treat, that the rate payer is paying for, that is safe drinking water they can use from their tap.
Yeah, I remember drinking out of the hose growing up here. I was okay, I think. Question, yeah, maybe. That's what happened. The rates, so I get a lot of people asking me, so how much of Ventura Water Pure, like what, so the rates are going up because of this project we can build, but you said earlier that the rates are going up because this is how they go up anyway, with all the stuff that we have to pay for with water, with the plant, with the employees, and so on and so forth. So is there, is there a way to say, you know, it's going up this much more because of the actual project, actual Ventura Water Pure? Does that make sense? Does that question make sense?
It does. So Kevin, you could probably jump in, but I will, yes. The rates go to pay all of these things, and the rates would be increasing regardless of these projects, because we are experiencing the same increases in energy, fuel, and delivering our chemicals, the chemical production themselves. We still haven't recovered from the supply chain deficit, and so our equipment is costing more to produce, and there's the uncertainty of the future tariffs. But if you see, looking through our projections, and we have this period where we're needing to increase rates, and we're needing to get over a hump in constructing these large projects, you see that there's time, there'll be, our projection goes where the rates come back down to a normal cost of, I wouldn't say normal, but a less stressed cost of service. Kevin, if you wanted, I'm trying to find our slide.
I guess it would be kind of nice to see, or for me anyway, it would be clear, it would be nice to see, take the project out, here's what the rates are going up over the next 10 years, put the project in, this is what it is. So we have a difference in, does that make sense?
That does make sense. I'll just add that, so that has, that has not been done, so I don't have an answer for you. A complicating factor would be that we've been in a period of time planning for the project, so that's already going to kind of weigh in. Even if we take the project out, there's been planning for it in this rate cycle. The thing I'll leave you with is that if we look around at, we look around California, we look around nationally, water and wastewater, looking back 10 to 20 years, the average increase on utility is on the order of 5% to 7% per year. So some of those agencies are younger, some of them are older, some of them have high capital needs, some of them have experienced conservation. But when we look across the state and across the country, we can expect 5%, 6%, 7% per year rate increases.
I know my time is up. I just want to say one last, if that's okay, Madam Mayor, I could just say one last thing? I just, I think for us, it's way easier to say, when someone says, "Our rates are going up," because we can say, "They're going up this much more because of Ventura Water Pure, but this is what they would be anyway." This is what, you know, if that makes sense. So thank you.
Thank you for that. I wanted to go back to the customer assistance program. You talked about currently it would be available for up to 400 customers. How many customers, I'm sorry?
Did you cut me off?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're, yeah, your name wasn't... How many customers do we currently have under that program?
We currently have 367, with a budget of $70,000. So if we see that we start... So if we see that we start getting more interest and we reach that cap of what the $70,000 was projected to cover, we can, we can reevaluate that budget and, and look at increasing that to encompass everybody that's put their interest in.
Okay. And they have to be, proof of eligibility is under the CARE program with Southern California Edison and the SoCal Gas. And so I guess I'm just, cause from what I, from what I think I remember, those are very low income levels, so I'm just trying to gauge, you know, the, someone has to be very, in a very low, low income in order to qualify. And I think nowadays we'll see not just very low income customers needing assistance. So is there another way or that they could be looked at to qualify or is that the only way that they'll be able to qualify for this assistance program?
We're, we are looking at other programs that other water suppliers have and looking at other ways to provide assistance to those customers and we can come back with that at a later date.
Okay. That'd be great. Thank you. Councilmember Campos, I apologize. Go ahead.
So same topic that I wanted to bring up. How many total customers does Ventura Water Pure have?
We have 33,000 customers.
33,000? Okay. And, and your offering right now is up to 400 low-income people?
Again, that can be adjusted depending on who comes onto the waiting list. If we reach that 400 limit, we can look at expanding that.
So do you include people other than those that qualify under CARE, like people with medical baseline, that because of what their rates are, don't take CARE because they get a better rate with medical, with disabilities or aging problems?
Yes, we have just added our medical assistance program and that enrolls them and that qualifies them for the, for the customer assistance program and then also prevents their water from being shut off.
So that, that qualifies them for your program, your low-income program?
Yes, if they have, if they have medical assistance program, they also receive the...
Okay. And then do you do any outreach on this program to monolingual or other Spanish speakers or other languages?
We do our best to try to outreach this. We do have this available on websites, the mailers trying to speak to it. That's the challenge, is getting to the people that really need it. And so we have started working with our folks at Community Development since they have data on low-income, fixed-income residences, those in need, and we're trying to bridge that gap and find out how to get to them. I will tell you that the majority of our customer care staff is bilingual and we have several languages covered within our staff, so there is support available and communication available for, for those that need it.
If people ask?
Currently, yes. So currently, yes, they have to request to be in the program. As Gina mentioned earlier, we are looking into partnering with California Edison to those people that are in their CARE program could be automatically enrolled into our program. And then we do additional outreach for other customers, but that would allow those folks that are already in that program not to have to apply to ours separately.
Okay. And I, I just hope you will consider while you're doing this that over the last four years, the amount of people needing food assistance from our food bank has greatly increased. I'm sure Councilmember Duran can address the number of people coming to his food service at his church. And rents have gone sky-high, so there's a lot of other things that people are having to pay for as well. So please consider very carefully when you bring this back to us to have a, a really stronger standard for, for those income levels. Thank you.
And I'll just add that for the, the $70,000 budget is for this fiscal year, we have, I can't remember exactly the trajectory, but we have programmed in up to $100,000 in future years to cover both the rate increases as well as increased enrollment.
For how many years?
I have to, I'd have to look at the data and see which, when it goes to 100, when it gets to 100, it stays at 100, but I'm not sure when it gets there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Duran, are you?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is just a quick comment in regards to, and thank you for like all these things that you're thinking about for people that can't afford the rates and so on. I was thinking about this not too long ago, so there's transitional livings out there with families living on, on properties and they're all, they're all low-income, for the most part, they're all low-income, they're all in that, that bracket because they live under all one roof and the, and the organization pays that bill. I mean, I, I think you said you were looking at something to that effect?
Correct. We're looking at that gap between the customer, the, who's paying for the meter and the service through the meter versus those consumers that are within that meter.
Yeah. That, that's great. And if there's any help I can give you on that, let me know.
Yeah, I'll just, I'm just gonna add that, as I mentioned, we're looking at automatically enrolling folks from, in the CARE program, but also looking at, we're working with our, our housing development program and looking at partnering with the housing authority for people that are in the Affordable Housing Program to be automatically enrolled in that CARE program as well.
I, I would add, if there are people in transitional living programs, you would look at that as well because these are people that were formerly homeless that are getting their feet back on the ground and that would help the organization.
Thank you. Councilmember McReynolds, followed by Councilmember Mangone.
Yeah, can we go to slide 14 in terms of, this is, my understanding is the breakdown of, oh, wait, not 14, sorry, 17, 17, I apologize. So this is the breakdown for single-family homes. Is that, so 64% of our single-family home ratepayers are in tier, are paying typically tier one? Is that my?
It's, thank you for the question. It's 64% of that class's water use. From memory, it is a majority of bills in tier one. Roughly 53% of customers are in tier one, but this does represent actual water usage.
Okay.
So I'm sorry, there is a distinction between the water use and the, and the, right? So a customer can have water use in tier one but have a tier-two bill because they also have usage in tier two. So I was just trying to clarify that this is the percent of water use, not the percent of customer bills.
So how do we get the breakdown of the, the single-family? Because you, you, there's two rate structures, right, between single-family and multifamily?
That's correct. They, they are both three-tier structures with a slight difference in the first tier and the second tier for multifamily, which considers the, the lower demands and densities in those drawing units.
So I guess, you know, it, it's easy to say for me, you know, living in a single-family home, but, you know, I'm mostly concerned about our multifamily residents. We just had an item before the council back in May regarding rent stabilization and one of the items that we discussed is that 44% of our residents are renters, that living in the, you know, so how do we, when we look at the single-family, that's one thing, I mean, generally, again, an assumption, you know, that they're probably at a higher economic class. How do we focus in on the multifamily? In terms of what the rate structure does to the multifamily?
So the way the structure is now and is proposed is to maintain what we have, which is effectively harmonized between the two. So they both have three tiers. The, the distinctions are basically the same, tier one being indoor needs on average, tier two, outdoor needs on average, and tier three, everything greater than. So the, the structurally, they are the same in the three tiers. The, the slight difference is that tier one is five units instead of six for multifamily. It's 10 instead of 12 for, for the second tier. And again, that's, that is a consideration that both the occupancy on average of a multifamily unit is lower, so the, and we see that in the data, that the water use indoors is lower and most are master-metered connections. And so for those irrigation needs, they're sharing outdoor use or greater-than indoor use across that connection.
I, I get that. And then just really quick comment on this slide in particular, 52. So you're, you're giving me the gallons per household, but then you bill in 100 cubic feet. So, you know, again, you're making me do math and that, I can do it, but I would prefer not to. So if you guys could just be consistent in terms of, like, so we can see where, where does that fit on the rate chart? Because now I gotta figure out where it is on the rate chart. But, so then going back to slide 25, if you don't mind. Again, I really wanna focus in on the, our multifamily tenants on here and, and, you know, I guess my point is a 68.5% rate increase is gonna affect them much higher than, than our single-family folks. And I would really like to be able to focus in on understanding what the rate is doing to the multifamily in particular on it. I think that's just, and then the same thing if we go to slide 28. The same question, you know, it's, again, this 106.2% rate increase is going to obviously affect them much heavier than, I believe, the single-family. I realize I'm making assumptions in those statements. And then if you could jump to slide 33. If you could add the compounding in here, just so, my, my quick math on the wastewater on the high range is that it ends up being 100, what did I, I thought I wrote it down. I think it ends up being like 140% when you compound it out. And then the slide before that, I think that ends, I don't know, I guess I wrote it down somewhere else. I did some quick math on it. Yeah, it ends up being 140%. You know, if we could put that out just so we understand what those rate increases are and then I'm gonna yield.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilor, oh, sorry, Mayor, if I could just, just on that last point, the apologies, it's not on the slide. The compounding is in the staff report on page 12 of 17. So I just wanted to note the, the compounding is, is in the staff report if, if you wanna look there. Thank you.
It's on the slide, but the compounding doesn't do for the high here. That's my point. So it does the 106.2, well, I'm looking at the wastewater one now, but, so if you go to the next slide. So it does for the green box, the staff report does the, it's the one over, the 202020 plus 1818.
Okay. Yeah, and staff, excuse me. And staff just provided that in the dollar impacts, but I see your point that, to provide it also in the percentages.
Thank you. Councilmember Mangone, followed by Deputy Mayor Halter.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for that presentation, the deep dive. It really cleared up a lot of questions I had. I wanna kinda go back to my question I brought up during the previous item, which was, is there any kind of like industry standards or calculations used to kinda gauge potential rate increases and the subsequent decrease in usage? Is there, and was that used in here at all?
Uh, thank you for the question. That, that is not used in our study. I believe there is some academic-type guidance out there. What we see is that water use generally is very inelastic, particularly so when we're talking about low water use. And as we just pointed out, City of Ventura customers are super savers. You know, the, we, we show the average use is eight. We have quite a few customers that use less than six throughout the year. So it's particularly, I'd argue, inelastic at that lower end where so much is in the fixed charge and you can only conserve so much down to zero. The, the last thing I would point out is, you know, if we, if we think of the past as prologue, in the last rate, in this past rate cycle, we were taking observations of demands in roughly 2017, 18, 19 for the 2020 period. When we compare that to last year, which was a wet year, depressed demand year, our demands are within 4-ish percent of where they were four or five years ago. Mindful that those, we've had water increases of 7% per year for five years, compounded 40-ish percent. So we haven't, at 7% per year, we have not seen a meaningful change in those overall demands as a data point.
Okay. Yeah, I ask because, you know, my average, for family four, my, our average combined usage is 8 HCF, so these figures are really easy for me to understand. But, you know, the first thing I'm gonna do in six years when my bill increases 150 bucks potentially is try to get into that first tier. So 8 HCF to 6 is 25% reduction in my usage, so that's why I'm just thinking, you know, overall, I would assume that's what most people are gonna try to do. So, okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Great. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, staff, again. Okay, just a thought, because what, what I get hung up on is tier one's all about what it takes for somebody to survive, basically, with the basic needs for living. And so a lower cost for the, just the basic needs. So then it becomes very important to me that the numbers that we assume exist in every single-family home become as accurate as possible, just to give anybody who is really sacrificing to live here with more people in a single-family home gets more benefit, right? Because they could stay in tier one a lot longer. So one of the things that's been used very effectively, and it's, can be a little scary, so you gotta be careful about as far as privacy and so forth, is cell phones, is we have, Beacon uses it to figure out where, where people go and how long they stay on beaches. VCTC uses it to see how many people exit freeway onramps, it goes on onramps at a given period of time and where they emanate from. Main Street Moves uses it to see how many people are in downtown and how long they stay and what stores they go into. So maybe that's the best indicator we have, is if it was generally speaking, that we determine at any given time, there's five cell phones in this house, five, three in that house, seven in that house. I don't know, it just might be, it'd be an interesting study because I think we have the software to do that, to just see how close we are to that 2.71 or whatever it was you said it is per single-family. Because we're, we're not a homogeneous community. It's not like, you know, places that I've, I grew up in, in the East Bay, you know, where every neighborhood is the same, three-bedroom, two-bath. We're not, and that's part of the beauty of Ventura. And so making sure that we give those that are really struggling, that may have a lot more people per household, a lower rate for a longer period of time, you know, is more equitable. Just showing, throwing that out.
Thank you. Councilmember Campos?
Thank you, Mayor. So I have a question about the, the bills. So of those thousands of customers, how many get a bill that does not include the wastewater?
Yeah, we'll, we'll look at getting that breakdown. We'll see if we can pull that up for you. But there are water customers that do not have wastewater service.
Okay. This, this chart and the chart on page 14, but do not go to that, please, and, and this current chart here, are two different figures. And actually, I think it's slide 28, not this one, indicates that in 2026, the wastewater amount will be $117, I believe. And the regular water usage amount is not clear because it depends on the tiers, but with a 3/4 inch size meter, the monthly charge is 24, 25. But in 2012, when I was paying my water bill, because my landlord didn't pay for anything, I was already paying $120 a month and it had both those costs on it. And so I know we've had some rate increases since then. So I'm wondering how the rates look so low here. I really would have liked to see people who get combined bills, what their status is gonna have liked to see, people who get combined bills, what their status is going to be in 2026. How much are they paying? Not just a percentage, but how much are they paying?
So to clarify, that's the combined service bill. Is this the right, the 117, starting with that amount? All right. And could you clarify your question?
So, we got the water-only indication, and we got the combined service monthly amount. But 13 years ago, I was paying that much in a single-family home that was 500 square feet. And I conserved water then. Everything, nothing went down the drain, almost. I carried it outside in buckets to water my plants. So, I, I don't understand how the water right now is, the current bill now is $117.77.
Councilmember Campos, I would have to look at your bill and see what we're looking at, and identify your water usage. Without that specific, I, I can't offer any additional information.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember McReynolds, is that still a, okay.
Yeah, thank you. So can you go to slide 47? And so, I, I think this, this would be in regards to the second bullet point. So, the, so these are, these are the recommendations, in terms of as you're building the rate structure, in terms of the fixed recovery, the residential, the water flow. So is there any way, because right now, it looks like we're headed towards a 68.5% increase for water over the five-year recommendation, five-year period, and 106.2 for the wastewater. Is there any way to further rate smooth that we're not looking at on here, that could reduce those increases with a, with a different rate smoothing?
I'll answer in, in two parts. One is on the financial plan. So we're talking about the smoothing of the, the overall revenue increases. So for instance, on water, we're showing 11% per year. The only things that come to mind would be extraordinary reductions in operating costs, deferring other capital, or structuring future debt differently. That will, all those things would have cash implications, and would have effects on that scheduling of increases. So that's one.
So of those three, the most likely would be restructuring of the debt. So is it possible to look at the idea of a 30-year, or, so right now, you're looking at a 5% rate over 30 years. Is there a 50-year term, and what would that rate be?
I don't believe there is. It would be more about how a, a 30-year term bond would be repaid. So, right now, the assumption is you make a level payment each year. That's how the existing debt is structured for the utilities. So it's a level repayment. What, what the financial advisors could entertain is to modify that repayment, so that the debt service ramps up. You still pay the same amount over time, the repayment over the 30-year window, but you would pay, obviously, less upfront.
So then, if we went back to slide, let's just go with slide 33. So, what would that restructured debt payment look like in regards to the, the green highlighted area? Would that?
I don't know exactly, but it is something that we could model and bring back to you. It would obviously reduce those numbers in this five-year window. It would also increase, to some degree, increases beyond that 2030.
Right. It would push it out. So if we go to slide, I apologize, 28. So on the out-years, you're looking at a 3% increase. So that, that 3% would be, but the rate would smoother, would be a smoother, as opposed to this hockey stick.
It, it would be smoother, but I would hesitate to say how much smoother. I mean, those are obviously substantial increases. The project timing and the project costs are what determine the overall revenue needs. By restructuring, or structuring that repayment differently, it would take some degree of pressure off this, but I, I don't want to try and put a magnitude to it.
Yeah, I understand. I, I think I'd just be interested in seeing anything that we can do. I think the biggest concern that this council has is that, that rate increase, and this one in particular, over the other one, because it's 106%. You know, so if there's a way to smooth that rate out, you know, through a debt restructuring, I think that would be something to look at. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and recognize any public comments at this time. Mr. City Clerk, do we have public comment?
Thank you, Mayor. We have six speaker cards submitted for this item. Our first speaker is George Amendola. Speakers will have three minutes. And George, you've been seated time.
Hi, Michael, could you pull up the presentation? Thank you. So, I'm using this presentation to keep me on track, basically. Next slide, please. Nobody's really talking about the economic impact of the ratepayers, to any great extent. I appreciate council's questions. I think you're more prepared than I've ever seen any other council prepare for this conversation. And it's nice to have this conversation dedicated, and not at 1:00 in the morning. So, it's appreciative of having this special meeting. I'm going to go back to the legal and financial concerns of the consent decree. I believe we meet three triggers that justify calling for a meet and confer. Look, at the end of the day, this is a tremendous burden on the ratepayers. There's no other way to mitigate that risk, other than what you've heard from the Raftellus consultant, by driving down the cost and expenses of this project. Staff doesn't want to do that. They don't want to consider alternatives. They feel they've already done all that work. They went through the process. There's not a willingness to revisit that. There's not a willingness of the Water Commission to revisit that. It has to be a decision made by council to revisit that. There are other alternatives. But the only way to get to the table on that is the first step, triggering the meet and confer. That starts the conversation. If it winds up back in federal court, so be it. It's going to cost you $16 million a year, as opposed to how much in debt service, when you have to go to the ratepayers and seek a bond at 4.5%, 5% plus over. Next slide, please. Basically, as Bert pointed out earlier, the $55 million, the threshold now, with increases, according to the consent decree, the threshold's now $97 million. We far exceeded that estimate. Again, another reason for the meet and confer. Next slide, please. This is interesting. This was the rate study done in 2021. This is the rate card up on the city website. Next slide, please. The rate card for this year, up on the city website. Not until this evening, in the past two years, that Councilmember McReynolds has been asking for, what are the rates? Have we received any clarity about the rates, until this evening? We, a couple weeks ago, at the Water Commission meeting, we received guidance, percentage guidance, but we didn't actually see actual dollar amounts. We didn't see the cost of services for connection charges, for commercial, for the various categories. It's still unclear to me, on the noise that we're hearing this evening. Next slide, please. This is a study that I conducted years back. I did a lot of work on the census, some of you may remember. So I pulled some census data. I compared it to the water rate increases. I forecasted, you know, the cost of water. And I did it by zip code. This is a direct correlation to council representation by districts. It took me two days to do this. Now, let me throw in a caveat. This is for illustrative purposes, to use the information supplied by staff. There's probably a fudge factor in here of accuracy, but with a hired consultant, you guys should have this already. Next slide, please. So, a few of us, again, for illustrative purposes, put together this cash flow analysis. And it's a cash flow analysis over the next 10 years. I have to give a lot of credit to Bob Alviani and Bert Handy. Bob being a retired banker, president of a bank. Bert, for being an investigator and relying on public information requests for this data. This is, again, something that we have never seen before. We heard about a cash flow analysis, but have you actually seen one from the consultant? Again, for illustrative purposes only, we forecast there's over a $500 million deficit that this project will accrue. You can move the numbers around, depending on when you finance it, in fiscal year 2027, but this is an accrual on a straight-line amortization basis for 32,000 ratepayers. We heard the number 33,000 this evening, which is the first time we've ever heard it had just up from 32,000. Next slide, please. This is basically a forecast of Wi-Fi alone and interest payments, and the effect on the monthly bill. Next slide, please. I'm sorry, excuse me, Beck. That is a taxpayer monthly bill assessment, again, on a straight-line amortization by the fiscal years, with the guidance of the rate increases for water, fiscal year 25, 7%, 26, 7%, wastewater, 6%. It's in line one. Now, what I will say is, illustrative purposes only, it's a straight-line amortization table. We're dismissing the fictitious number of eight HCF, nine HCF, et cetera, because in this rate study in 2015, they were using 15 HCF as the average consumption. In 2021, they were using nine HCF as the average. And now, tonight, it's being used as 8%. Guess what? Since the last rate study, they gave themselves an 11% bump. Because water went down by 11%, but they're driving the cost up. So they are increasing their rates by 11% without being very clear. Next slide. By the way, I don't think I'm really qualified, as I heard before, to deliver this. I'm not a water expert, but I do have an expertise in utility rates. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Bob Alviani. Bob, you've been seated time as well. You'll have six
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Thank you for your time this evening. You have been provided a hard copy of this cash flow chart that George happened to share with you earlier. And I'm going to refer to that in a couple ways. I'll try and be as quick as I possibly can with it. First of all, whenever the Water Department seems to talk about the cost and the future of water, they like to talk about the possibilities, rather than the probabilities. And from a legal standpoint, yeah, everything's possible. Are we going to have a drought? Yeah, we're going to have a drought. It's going to happen again. And for what period of time? We don't know. But if I'm going to scare you into submission, I'm going to talk about that it's all possible. But probable, you have to look at historical content. So let's go back to reality. Your numbers right now, all these numbers are probably just blowing up in your head. You know, in banking, we used to say, if you want to really dazzle them, dazzle them with charts and numbers. They can't get out from under it, and they can't figure it out. So I'm going to bring you back to reality and just say this. You're out of money. That's the reality. We could talk all day long about, do we have enough water? We could talk all day long about the consent decree. We can talk all day long about needing water, and so on. But you look at the cash flow. The cash flow that you asked for a few months ago, that you still have not gotten, I saw on the report that they were going to have a cash flow tonight. I didn't see a cash flow. But I've provided you the cash flow, based upon the numbers that I got from the Water Department. I didn't make these numbers up. These are their numbers. And if some of them are wrong, have them point out to us what numbers are wrong. We're big, big boys here, big boys and big girls. Just bring the numbers to us. We've been asking for them for years. Here's a cash flow. So if you take a look at G1 and G41, that tells you the fact that we're going to run out of money by fiscal year 2028. If you look at N40, the total project is to reach $912 million. If you go ahead and look at M41, I can tell you that you're going to need another $350 million, just to go ahead and do what the Water Department says needs to be done. Their numbers, not mine. Payments, if you take a look at N12 and M12, you'll see that payments go as high as $427 per month, compared to the $93 that we started out with. Now, I know that there's a factor in here, I just heard about today, about two hours ago, called the CapX. I think it was referred to in tonight's discussion, having to do with lowering the rate for some people. 400 out of 32, 33,000 people, all of this is done to go ahead and dazzle you with, oh, look how hard we're working in order to make this affordable. 400 out of 33,000 ratepayers? I mean, that's really nice, and I'm glad that we can do it. But don't let that type of a, a program skew what you're looking at here. So what would you do in the event that the city had a problem? If the city came to you and said, our, our general fund is, we're out of money, what would you do? Well, what you should do, first thing, is you're going to freeze hiring. Okay, everything's frozen. Until we figure this out, everything's frozen. That's what we're suggesting here. The money that's been spent on Ventura Water Pier and the water programs, everything should be frozen. And at that point in time, everything needs to be re-looked at. You need to get an RFP on every single portion of the project, and you need to go back and review it. That's really what's needed, and that's what this body needs to do. The Water Commission's not going to do it. To tell you the truth, I'm not really sure you can shed your, your hat and say, I'm not a Water Commissioner tonight. I'm speaking on, on behalf of myself. Well, I'm sorry, it doesn't work that way. Either you're a Water Commissioner, or you're not. You swore, just like yourselves, you swore that you're going to be a council member. You're a council member. So, the whole point of this is, we need you, as our body representatives, to go ahead and look at this again, and say, maybe we don't have to spend $912,000, or a million dollars.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much for your time.
Next speaker is Linda, followed by Heather May.
Hello. Good evening, council members. My name is Linda Byrne. I'm here tonight because I recently learned about the proposed increases in water rates, and I felt it important to speak directly to you about how this could affect some of Ventura's most vulnerable residents. I manage several rental properties here in Ventura, including Two Hood Assisted Homes in District 1. One of these properties is a fourplex, where all the tenants are people with disabilities and special needs. These are individuals who depend on stable, affordable housing, not just for shelter, but for their daily health, safety, and quality of life. For many of them, having a secure place to live is the foundation of their independence. Two of the properties I manage are already on the edge financially. Because of recent wildfires, insurance policies for these homes were canceled. One property was unable to secure normal insurance coverage. One property was unable to secure normal insurance coverage and now relies on the California Fair Plan. While this provides a safety net, the Fair Plan coverage is more limited and significantly more expensive, with replacement costs more than doubling from previous rates. This is a substantial financial burden for these owners. Here in Ventura, rent increases are limited to 5% plus to Consumer Price Index annually, which I fully support. In most cases, it helps to protect tenants from sudden dramatic rent hikes. But this also means property owners can't offset rising expenses by raising rents beyond this cap. They're left absorbing these extra costs themselves. To help, I even personally have cut my own management fees in an effort to keep these homes viable and affordable. We've cut costs wherever possible. There truly is nothing left to trim. These properties are operating with razor-tin margins, and this new proposed water rate increase threatens to push this past the breaking point. If this new increase moves forward, it could be the tipping point for some of these owners. In fact, two of them who house some of Ventura's most vulnerable tenants have told me that they are seriously considering selling their properties if costs continue to rise. If this happens, these homes will certainly not remain affordable. The tenants, many of whom live with disabilities and special needs or on fixed incomes, could be displaced or worse, lose their housing. Losing these homes means losing vital stability for some of these people who need it most. This decision is not just about numbers on a spreadsheet, it's about people, our neighbors, who have faced tremendous challenges and finally found some stability. I want to point out a critical gap in the current approach. The city's Customer Assistance Program is designed for individual households, but it does not help in situations like ours. Multi-unit properties that rely on a single water meter, like the fourplex I mentioned, do not qualify for this assistance. Thank you. Thank you for your attention.
Next speaker is Heather May. Reminder for our virtual folks, if you'd like to speak on this item, use the raise hand feature.
Good evening. So, again, I want to remind everyone that we just finished our last rate increase. So when everybody opens their July bill, you're going to have your fifth rate increase, which is over 40% in a four-year period. And now, on top of that, you're asking for 11% to 18% for the next six or seven years. And there's a couple of things that can be done. First of all, you can rip up the egregious wish-to-yo consent decree. Four city councils, five city councils, four city managers, four city attorneys, four water managers, and not one of you has looked at that wish-to-yo consent decree and said, "You know what? Time to go back to the drawing board." It should have been done a long time ago, and this is your opportunity. We found out very recently that we have rebels on our city council. I'd like to welcome you to the rebel base, and it's time for you to fight for all of Ventura. You can fight against the state and the federal governments that are demanding all of these additions to our water supply. We can do a regional program and let everybody else pay for it. If our state and federal government wants this, let them pay for it. Why do the ratepayers have to pay for it?
That concludes public comment.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to council, and again, this is a no motion required, as it's just a receive and file. But if there are any further questions, Councilmember McReynolds, followed by Councilmember Schumacher.
I have two. I guess so, if we can go to Slide 45, if you could just kind of walk me through the timeline again, so in terms of when we'll...
Yeah, we'll log in here in just a second.
Then I'll just jump over to my other question then, which is, can you please explain the Ventura Water Pure project versus the membrane bioreactor ultraviolet disinfectant? And how the two projects are actually separated?
The membrane bioreactor project is to replace the failing infrastructure of the city's wastewater treatment plant. So that is your wastewater treatment facility. The city will be left without one if we do not continue this project. The Ventura Water Pure program is going to take the discharge from that facility and treat it to produce water supply. That will meet not only the consent decree, but the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit that says we have to remove our discharge from our wastewater facility out of the Santa Clara River estuary.
So the membrane bioreactor project, regardless of the consent decree, would be something we have to do?
It is something we have to do. Mother Nature is taking over.
Again, can you remind me how old the existing facility is?
The existing facility infrastructure currently is mostly 1970s.
Okay. So it's 50-year? It's at the end of its...
It's at the end of its useful life.
Okay. And then, Slide 45. Could you just walk me through the timeline in terms of when we're going to see this?
So we were going to take our feedback that we get from you this evening, and we're going to have a special meeting at the Water Commission on August 7th and a regular meeting on August 25th. So between those two meetings, we're going to work out what, we're going to take the questions, we're going to work out the model with the feedback, and bring to you on September 23rd the rate that we are going to propose that's going to sustain the water and wastewater activities for the next five years.
And that would be the rate effective July 1, '26?
Yes.
Okay. And then, for the next following five years? Okay. Okay. And the last question is, do you have the feedback from this council in terms of what you're looking for to build into that?
Oh, I will, you know, Kevin, if you can, we'll go back through that with you.
Yeah, we'll just return to the recommendations slide where we are asking for any additional feedback. Again, as far as the rate structure modifications, there are three there that we've gone through with Water Commission over the course of two meetings in May and June. So the Water Commission recommendations are there, but we do ask for any feedback that you wish to provide on those. And similarly, on what was presented tonight, as far as the affordability study, the framework and our proposed approach, or expectations of what you would like to see or need to see at the end.
Okay. And in regards to Mr. Amendola's, you know, in the, what I'm going to call the third subpoint on the second bullet points, you know, I do see that we're pulling back the maximum cap, both on the water rates and the, so that will result, that's a different rate increase that we're building into this.
Yes, those will, those will feed into the final rates, if we can, I'll just...
Regardless if you're a Tier 1, we're pulling back where Tier 1, Tier 2 starts?
Tier 1, as it's proposed, the residential tiers will remain the same.
Right. Those will be three tiers. It's just when...
The prices will inevitably change, because it's a function of the financial results we presented tonight, the cost allocations on the system, and any of these changes to the structures themselves. So inevitably, cost structures change, where they're incurred, how they're incurred on the water and the wastewater system. That will play into the final rates. Similarly, these active changes, like reducing the flow charge, will feed into the final rates.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Schumacher?
Thank you, Mayor. So I appreciate, oh, thank you for your presentation. I appreciate how much work this is, that you put all into this. I just want to echo what Councilmember Duran and Councilmember McReynolds is saying. I think often, we get the micro and how, all of the details and per household, and I think what Councilmember Duran was asking, and similarly, what we've been asking for, is just that larger picture view. And this, and I'm going to ask our CFO to step up here, so that way I can ask about the validity to the spreadsheet, but this is really what I'm looking for, because this makes sense to me. And the reason why I say that is because then we understand that, are we going into increasing our rates for all of our households? On top of that, we will also see some deficit in the future, and that, if that is the trajectory that we're going then, then it would be completely irresponsible for this council to be moving forward in that direction. But before we get to that, that's in the assumption that this is correct. So I would like to ask, Mr. Morley, you have got a chance to review this. I know it not in detail, because you just received it, but can you help me understand if there's some validity to, one, the increase of 200% in the next 10 years, and then, two, are we going into a trajectory where we have a $350 million deficit in the next 10 years?
Yes, with regard to the increase of 200% in the next 10 years, I think the presentation that Mr. Kostic gave us a minute, a while ago, gave us an indication that, no, it's not 200%, even at these rates that we're not even sure about yet. The, with regard to the validity of the cash flow, I have looked at it. When I first opened up that file, the very first thing that I noticed was that there was a glaring omission in income in the cash flow analysis. And if you're going to do a cash flow analysis, I think you would want to probably include all of your potential income in your cash flow analysis. There's $362 million worth of potential lease revenue bonds left out of that cash flow analysis. Let me see, 362 minus 350, that means we're at a surplus of $12 million, not a deficit of $350 million. In addition to that, we heard a speaker come up and say that we use a straight-line amortization on that. Maybe not the right word, amortization, but what they have done is use a straight-line escalation of costs in that, which is, as far as operational expenditures for the wastewater and the water operations, is probably a little bit too overstated, because he's using a straight-line escalation based on perceived rate increases. And when we're talking about things like operational costs, normally, we're going to, if we're going to use an escalator for operational costs, we're going to use a combination of a couple of things. One is what we know to be increases in labor costs, and the other is what we can perceive to be increases in non-labor costs, normally based on something like a CPI increase or a CCI increase, not a perceived rate increase. CPI increase is, you know, if I use the Los Angeles-Anahime Regional Increase that we use for our user regulatory fee schedule, 3.2%, not 11%, so I wouldn't be putting together a cost flow analysis that uses an 11% escalator in costs for the next 10 years, when it could be 3.2% for the next two years, or even lower, depending on what the CPI change is every year, and I would be looking at that every year. As regards to labor costs, we know that every employee in this city, right now during this current pay period, is getting a 3% COLA.
Right.
So why would I, why would I say that I'm going to use an escalator of 11% on labor when I know it to be 3%? Those two factors alone indicate that all of the expenditures for operational costs in that are, I would say, probably pretty significantly overstated. There are probably other, there are, I know there to be other flawed assumptions or missing assumptions in that cash flow analysis. I wouldn't have presented it.
Sure. So, just because my time is running out, I know that you're working on something, because I just sent that over to you a couple days ago. So, and I'm looking forward to that analysis, and I think you and I have a one-on-one coming up soon. Was there anything else you would like to add?
Yes, there is, just one thing. With regard to cash flow analysis, and I'm not sure everybody is aware of this, but the rate study itself results in a pretty extensive cost flow analysis. And so if we looked at the last rate study, we would be able to see a cash flow analysis for the five years of that rate study. Even though this current analysis isn't complete, if we wanted to figure out what our cash flow analysis was going to be, I would lean on a document like that rather than a document that was presented to you.
Thank you. And Miles, you had something?
Thank you. I was going to say something very similar. When Mr. Kostic and our financial advisors are preparing the financial plans, it covers the debt service that the city needs to pay. So it includes all of those costs. And when we go out for additional financing, like for bonds in the future, we have to demonstrate to them that we're going to be able to make all those debt service payments. So staff is regularly working to make sure that we can demonstrate those payments can be made in the future.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. That was very helpful information. Deputy Mayor Halter?
My question's been answered. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Campos?
Someone had asked me a question today, earlier in the day, to ask you, and I forgot. And that is, if you have any amount, she said about 1,000, but any amount of people getting a lower rate because of low income, will that increase the rates of people who can afford the water?
The budget for the Customer Assistance Program comes out of our penalties, the penalties collected from late payments and other things, and it's just a portion of that fund. So there's, you know, we can increase the customer assistance to a certain point and not exceed that penalties amount. And that's important for maintaining the legality of our water rates.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McReynolds?
I just, as we're like, looking at like, cash flows and stuff like that, I want to go back to my original question this last session. Is the methane, or methane, sorry, the bioreactor is an entirely separate project? We have to do that. That's not a, that's not a consent decree thing or anything like that. So when we're looking at those costs, my understanding is, please correct me if I'm wrong, it's more expensive to refurbish the existing facility than it is to replace it?
Correct. The lifecycle cost for replacement is greater than replacing with the MBR.
And the, the bioreactor is $302 million?
That is our current cost estimate, yes, $302 million. We will be hearing about that in our next...
So when we talk about the consent decree, we're talking about Water Pure, which is a different project. The two projects are highly interrelated, but they are two separate.
They are two separate projects that are symbiotic.
Right. And theoretically, we could do the bioreactor and not do Water Pure.
We could do...
It wouldn't meet the new standards, I guess.
We would not meet the discharge requirement to remove our discharge out of the estuary. We would be, well, I'll take that back. We are going to discharge to the ocean. We're going to be discharging highly tertiary-treated water to the ocean, and that is in violation of the recycled water policy, saying that's a waste of water. And if the city needed to go find new water supply, they would urge us to use that recycled water first. So it goes back to the water supply need as well.
I just, when we're looking at these cash flows, I mean, there is not an alternative to not do something regarding the bioreactor.
There's not, no, sir.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Duran?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Schumacher, you asked Mr. Morley, did you send him that paper to do? Awesome. So I guess we're going to expect that back, because I'd love to see that. We'd love to see a cash flow on that. I agree with you 100%. So that will be hopefully coming back, so we could see that, based on what we just saw. The other thing, too, is I heard one of our speakers talk about the consent decree and about meet and confer, and, help me.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Duran. And Ms. Dorrington covered this in a slide in the first presentation on history. So under the...
May I interrupt for just a second?
Yeah.
I understand that part, but they're saying for us to, the recommendation was made to stop. I know, the slide said it was like, 18 million a year we would pay in fines or something like that, if that would be the cost, something like that. And so, so why would, why would we want to stop the consent decree, or why would we want to stop doing what we're doing? I guess, let me ask you this question, for what's, what still needs to be done for the simplest compliant of that consent decree?
Yes, so thank you for the question. So the, in order to still comply with the consent decree, we have to meet the reduction requirement, so reducing the city's discharge to the estuary. We're going to achieve the first part of that at the end of this year by discharging out the outfall, but then we have to put that to beneficial reuse. And it's a significant volume of water, as I mentioned earlier, and it needs to be applied somewhere. The city... The city evaluated several alternatives, and the most cost-effective alternative was the Ventura Water Pure program. So the city does need to meet the beneficial reuse requirement. Another requirement in the consent decree is the remaining amount of water, the city, the small amount it'll keep discharging to the estuary, has to meet a low nitrate limit of four milligrams per liter. The city will achieve that through actually the membrane bioreactor project. We'll be able to meet that requirement. Originally, it was contemplated that flow would go through treatment wetlands, but that cost has now been eliminated because we'll meet that requirement through the membrane bioreactor project.
I guess the concern, and thank you for your answer, I guess the concern was that we, we saw, said the most cost-effective was water, Ventura Water Pure program. And I saw the numbers on there, with Oxnard was more expensive, all the things that we talked about. When was the last time we got a cost on all of that? How long, how old are those numbers?
The last time we updated those were in 2023.
2023? And those are still, Ventura Water Pure, you're saying is still a better deal?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, I know you were looking for some sort of direction, although no action required, but do you have what you need from council?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So if, this is the direction that the Water Commission has provided thus far, and so if City Council doesn't have any additional input or deviation from that at this point, I think staff would then go forth based on these Water Commission recommendations. And as Ms. Dorrington and Mr. Kostic said, the next step is actually preparing the draft rates, and those would then be reviewed by Water Commission at its August meetings. So what it would include is maintaining the current residential water tier, three-tier structure at the tier cutoff points, modeling both 30% fixed revenue and then 25% fixed revenue. So Water Commission wanted to see those two different options, so staff is planning to do that. And then for the wastewater flow charge, reducing the residential cap, the number of units for both single-family and multifamily residential. So unless there's any additional feedback from council, that's...
I do see Councilmember McReynolds' name come up.
Thank you. I wanted to see the debt restructure so that if we could amortize it, either it's front-loaded or backloaded, so that we can smooth the rate out more. And then I would like to see the multifamily, because again, we have 44% of our residents living in multifamily apartments such. And I think they're the most sensitive to the rate.
Okay, so potential debt restructuring options to smooth out the rate increases?
To reduce it, yes.
To reduce or smooth it out?
Well, reduce the rate structures over the next five years.
Over the next five years, okay. And then, and then for multifamily, just additional information?
Correct.
Okay.
Great. Well, thank you, staff, and thank you everyone for the work and information on all this and the public speakers as well. We are going to go ahead and take a 20-minute break and then come back to continue on our agenda.
That's why you swore.
No, I don't remember scoring that.
Okay, great. If I'm missing some numbers, tell me what they are.
Oh, I've mentioned what they are.
Yeah, but you never share them with me. You can find me.
Okay, we are back. Thank you, everyone, for hanging in there. We are back on our formal item number five, which is to award the award of an early guaranteed maximum price construction contract with PCL Construction, Inc. for project WW twenty-two dash twelve fifteen, the membrane bioreactor slash ultraviolet light disinfection project. And again, we have staff presentation, and I'll turn it over to you to begin.
All right, good evening, Mayor Dr. Sanchez Palacios, Deputy Mayor Halter, council members, and citizens of Ventura. Thank you again for the special meeting. Gina Dorrington, your general manager for Ventura Water. And presenting this evening will be Alec Roberts, Principal Civil Engineer. I also wanted to make note that we do have our water commissioner Susan Mulligan here. She was selected by the Water Commission to be here tonight to answer any questions regarding the vote for these items as they come to city council. Thank you.
Again, good evening, mayor, deputy mayor, city council, members of the public. This presentation is going to be on the early guaranteed maximum price construction contract for the membrane bioreactor and ultraviolet light disinfection project. So today, we're going to go over the background of the MBR project. In addition, a quick overview after Gina's presentation on the history earlier tonight. We'll cover what construction manager at risk is. And we'll review what the early guaranteed maximum price work package is. And we'll cover the engineering services during construction we're bringing forward for award, and also the construction management software. We'll cover next steps and end on recommendations. So again, a quick recap following Gina's presentation. And there were significant structural issues identified in 2021 during the wastewater master plan inspections. And you can see on the right here, we have four photos identifying those significant structural issues that will be replaced with the membrane bioreactor project should we proceed with it. In addition, the membrane bioreactor project was selected as an all encompassing approach to replacing the existing secondary treatment process and several other required projects to meet the water quality objectives for discharge to the San Clara River estuary. And so a quick overview of what those additional projects were. We can see on the right here, at the time, it was estimated those projects were cost around sixty-seven million dollars. These projects were all removed from the CIP when we moved forward with, decided to move forward with the membrane bioreactor project. Again, those are 2023 estimates, and those were all very high level estimates at the time. And in addition, the lifecycle costs for the membrane bioreactor project was showing to be significantly more effective than repairing the aging equipment. I know Gina's presentation also showed that lifecycle cost assessment. So the cost history of the membrane bioreactor project, beginning here with one hundred and ninety-seven million dollars for the total estimate, that's not just construction, but all costs included contingencies, design efforts, construction management, everything all in. That 2023, we completed the basis of design report at the time, it was estimated to be one hundred and ninety-seven million dollars. As we progressed to 2024, thirty percent cost model estimate. This was an estimate that was actually produced by our C Mar contractor, PCL Construction. They estimated at the time that it was two hundred and eighty-nine million dollars for us to proceed with the overall project. And then it increased to, in 2024, to three hundred and fifteen million when we reached the sixty percent guaranteed maximum price that our contractor put together. At that time, we took a step back and wanted to reevaluate if we were making the best decision for the city. And we considered relocating the membrane bioreactor project to another location at the wastewater plant. And, and the reasons that we really are seeing these escalations over time. Two weeks ago, the water commission ad hoc committee did present, kind of trying to explain and shed light on why we're seeing these increases over time. And really, it's, it's inflation, it's market conditions. You know, going through COVID, there was severely abnormal market conditions that were impacting costs. There were site constraints, so fitting this project into the footprint led to severe costs, severe constraints that led to needing to construct things in a linear fashion. So meaning we had to construct one portion of the project and then move on to the next as opposed to simultaneously constructing them together. And then finally, there, as you progress with design, there's naturally things that you find out as you progress that weren't fully accounted for, and those were included in the cost as well. This 2025 estimate was presented to council back in January. We still currently believe this number to be accurate. We are not expecting any further increases yet. That is still the best number, and we believe that's true today. Okay, so again, talking about the relocation back in January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, council authorized proceeding with the relocated site. As you can see, the prior site, showing on the image on the left here, was in an area that was heavily constrained and near existing infrastructure. And we relocated it to this south site, and you can see on the right how it will fit onto that south site without needing to relocate too many other processes at the wastewater plant. Okay, so I'll give you guys a reminder on what the construction manager at risk delivery method is. The construction manager at risk really is where we bring on a contractor to help us in design. And so we're bringing them on an early portion and significantly earlier than would, would be if it was a bid project. So they can collaborate with us, and they can work on things like value engineering, which is where we look for opportunities to reduce the cost without reducing the functionality of what we're constructing. Constructibility reviews. Our C Mar contractor has been instrumental in, in helping us ensure that what we're constructing is, or what we're planning to construct is feasible. And, you know, if we need to shift the footprint of a basin a few feet away from existing infrastructure, that we can know that now when we're in design and pivot and make those changes early on as opposed to after we've completed design, and that would be a costly change order. And they can assess, assess and mitigate risks for us. So they're looking to make sure that we're moving forward on the best path. And any risks that they can identify, we can best mitigate them in the design as opposed to mitigating them with, with high costs later on. And they also can coordinate with plant operations. And this was really key for an existing facility like the wastewater plant. This facility operates twenty-four seven, around the clock, treating millions of gallons a day. And coordinating this construction, this is a very large construction project, as you all know, coordinating it with the existing operations was really necessary on a project this scale. So in addition to collaborating with the contractor in design, they can put together what's called a cost model for us. So a contractor has a good advantage as, when they're putting together a cost model, they really have their pulse on the market of construction. They really know what it's going to take to construct this project going forward. Engineers typically historically look back and compare to similar projects, what they costed and tried, and try and escalate them. But a contractor has that distinct advantage of really knowing what the current market conditions are. They're asking for quotes and bids for what these prices would be if they were to move forward. And so they give us a lot of insight into the cost and the schedule. And really, that helps us make really informed decisions. And so, you know, we, we can see that on that slide that showed the bar charts of the cost, that big jump, that big initial jump was really what we're seeing when our contractor got involved and really helped us make those informed decisions on cost. So in addition to helping us make informed decisions, they can also put together what's called guaranteed maximum price packages. And what that is, is really, it's a construction package that they're saying, they will guarantee this is the maximum price, and we will do this work. And we're going to be bringing up for it tonight, the next bullet here is an early construction package. It is, it is also a guaranteed maximum price, so we'll bring forth and discuss more on that shortly here. But really, the guaranteed maximum price, it, it gives us cost certainty, which on the membrane bioreactor project, it's been a long project that we've seen large inflation, and it's been a concern of council, and very understandably, that, you know, we, when do we know what the costs are going to be? This early guaranteed maximum price construction package is really that first time that we're getting to lock in a significant portion of this project cost and know and have that high level cost certainty for this portion of the work. And in addition, it'll allow them to procure equipment, so long lead equipment that we know that we need. We've seen lead times for equipment, that's the delivery times, take years through COVID. And that's been a significant change that the market's been adjusting to. And by doing early works packages, we can accelerate the schedule as well. So tonight, the early works construction package that we're going to bring forward includes four main categories that the contractor will be working on. They're going to procure the backup generators for this project. So again, that's one of those long lead equipment items. They're going to relocate existing facilities and utilities at the wastewater plant to make room. They're going to do site preparation and soil improvements, and they're going to construct the concrete treatment basins. And so these four categories, what we've seen is that these items are ready to progress to that next stage of construction. The remainder of the project is still in design, and they are not a portion that we're ready to award those tonight. But tonight, we are ready to award these, these four items. And really, doing the work now is going to help us control those costs. Okay, so the importance on the timing of this item and why we're bringing forth an early package as an advance of the remainder of everything else that we'll return to you guys with later is, number one, the public health and safety, this is replacing failing infrastructure at the wastewater plant. Again, as we were talking about earlier, this has, is, is a very distinct project separate from the Ventura Water Pier program. This is replacing failing infrastructure that's needed to maintain treatment operations at our wastewater plant. There are legal and consent decree and regulatory discharge permit timelines that we're trying to meet. Again, as Miles alluded to, even though this project is not a part of the Ventura Water Pier program, it does reduce the nitrate, the nutrient load that was going to the estuary. So we had another project that was taken out that was going to reduce nutrient going to the estuary. This project will do that, which is a requirement of the consent decree. And, and the timeline again, that is associated with the consent decree and our discharge permit. Right now, if we move forward quickly, we're, we're still on track to maintain the understood timelines by those parties. Additionally, we have grant and loan funding. We have three hundred and sixty million dollars that we need to spend between the MBR project and the Ventura Water Pier project or program by the end of February twenty twenty-eight to maintain ninety million dollars in grants. So that is obviously a very large amount of grant funding that we are lucky to receive. And that did have a significant impact on the rates that we're now looking at. So we, we want to do our best to make sure we spend that money and we receive the full grant funds that we've been, we've been granted. And, and I can update that we just sent in, a couple of weeks ago, we just got approved for our first draw of one point five million dollars under that ninety million dollar grant. So that was a, a big milestone for us, and we're really happy with that. Number four here, the supply water source of the Ventura Water Pier program. The membrane bioreactor is what's going to be producing water that will ultimately feed the Ventura Water Pier program. Five, the delays in work increases costs due to inflation and allows for future potential risks to creep in as well. So as we've seen, the further we've delayed projects, and it's been discussed already tonight, the more we're allowing inflation and cost increases to impact our project. So again, locking in a large portion of this project with that price tonight allows us to get a lot more cost certainty than we would otherwise have. And then again, six, provide cost certainty, so. Okay, so PCL Construction Incorporated is the C Mar contractor that we've been working with on this project. They put together, again, a guaranteed maximum price for us for tonight. Again, this is a guaranteed maximum price. We see the total here in bold, I'm sure everyone's eyes are jumping straight to that. It's approximately eighty million dollars, which is a large amount. But I do want to emphasize that it is a guaranteed maximum price. And so there are contingencies and allowances incorporated into that that are there in place to account for anything, any uncertainties or any, any risk known or unknown are built into that eighty million dollar contract. And so even if things change in the future, that eighty million dollars is meant to be a maximum price for this work. And it's important to note that if, if we do, if it does end up costing less than the eighty million dollars, that money is not expended, and the city will retain those funds. It is an open book pricing, so different from a low bid project, which is typical for the city. We do have an open book pricing, which is where the contractor has given us a really large, it's an extremely large amount of information going line item by line item, showing all of the work and how they got to those numbers. It's extremely detailed, and we've had our owner's advisor review that cost. They have cost estimators on staff, that's their full time job is to estimate costs for construction projects. And they've reviewed that and verified it and said that, yes, you're getting a good and fair price for this project, and, and we should be moving forward with it. Additionally, a lot of this work will not be performed by the PCL. They, they will self perform a portion of this work, but a lot of this work will be competitively bid out for subcontractors and suppliers, allowing them to make the best value decision for the city ultimately. And again, that's going to allow local businesses, our contractors, trade unions to compete for this work and potentially be involved in these projects as well. So this will hopefully, we, we strongly believe we're getting a, a really good price for this. And again, a lot of this will ultimately be, be bid out and selected on best value. So we'll get an agreed upon schedule, and finally, this is discreet work that can be used by any contractor. So regardless if we move forward with the C Mar contractor for the remainder of the work, this work can be used by them in that second phase, or it can be used by another contractor if we decide to bid this project out in the future. So all in with the ten, approximately ten percent contingency or the amount that we're bringing forward tonight to, to lock in the cost for is almost eighty-eight million dollars, as you can see on the slide. Okay, the next slide here, we are showing the engineering services during construction. This is where we receive design, receive design support from Kennedy Jenks. Kennedy Jenks is our design engineer on this project. And this is typical for all capital projects at the city and other cities, of course, too. When you move forward to construction, you retain your designer onboard so they can help reviewing submittals, ensuring that, ensuring that what's being constructed matches what they designed. They can answer technical questions, clarify anything that's needed, and, and make updates, and create drawings for us to have good records. So this amount is about three million dollars in total with another approximately ten percent contingency, so about three point two million all in. And the last thing we are looking forward to, for authorization on tonight is the construction management software known as Procore. So Procore is a construction management software. It really helps us to, to, again, automate workflows for construction. There's obviously in a large complex project, there's a lot of players involved. You have a really large team doing the actual construction with the contractor. We have construction management staff, we have city staff involved, we have our designer onboard. There's a lot of formal processes that go through in a large public works project like this that need verification and approvals and people signing off on every single thing that really is moving. that really is moving forward. And so Procore is going to allow us to automate that on a large complex project like this and streamline our document organization. Another thing too, it is a cloud-based software that is an industry standard and that is really key for us. We wanted something that was going to be familiar to all the parties involved. So we weren't looking for something that was going to require a lot of staff time to develop and work on and shape for our needs. We want something that was going to work for us right out the bat and be familiar for everyone. And last but not least here, this cost I want to mention is for the membrane bioreactor project and a future Ventura Water Pure construction projects over the next five years. So we've shown it here tonight because this is the first project that we want to start the construction work on for this, but this cost right here that you see the almost the $425,000, that is inclusive of five years of construction work across all of those projects. And I shall mention as well that the cost will be shared with those other projects as well ultimately. Okay, so the membrane bioreactor funding overview. So as you can see, our current estimate is 302 million and our spend to date is 16.3 million. That number was provided from finance spent to date as of July 1st, 2025. So that is a very recent number. And you can see what we're requesting is a large portion of that green funding, that estimated remaining funding to be spent. Again, almost 88 million for construction, 3.2 million for engineering and .4 million for construction software. And those amounts do of course include the contingencies that we're also looking for award on tonight. So next steps in the project, we will continue to develop the design of this project. Right now, we're hard at work on progressing that south site design and working on that 60% level, that'll be our next big milestone, we'll reach 60%. When we reach that 60% milestone, our contractor will develop the guaranteed maximum price for the remainder of the work. And we're planning to bring that back to city council for review this coming winter. So that'll be when your opportunity to award the remainder of the work and get cost certainty on everything else that's not inclusive of this package here tonight. So this is consistent with the strategic priority for the city. The recommendation, the staff report supports the strategic priority of infrastructure and the focus area of continue to maintain and improve conditions of roads, water, storm drains and parks. In addition, the water commission on May 19th did vote in favor of this, vote in favor of supporting the process of performing certain aspects of the or at the membrane, the MBR project early with six yeses, one absent and zero no's. Finally, we have our recommendations. We are bringing forth for approval, the early works package, guaranteed maximum price early works package, approximately $80 million with PCL Construction Incorporated. And the next item, we're looking to bring forth approximately 10% contingency on top of that, that is a city-controlled contingency. We are, and C, we are looking to authorize and approve engineering services during construction with our designer Kennedy Jenks for approximately $3 million. And item D, we're looking to award contingency on top of that engineering services during construction with Kennedy Jenks, again approximately 10%. Item E, approve and authorize the purchase order with Karasoff Technology Corp. for Procore construction project management software. And finally, F, we brought forth F to for you guys to direct staff to notify city council if 50% of the contingency or PCL or Kennedy Jenks is utilized or anticipated to be used. That is really something that came about this time last year when we were awarded a large contract. You guys wanted to be aware that when we're crossing that threshold, sorry, for contingency that you want to be notified and get an explanation as to why those funds were being expended. And so we include that here for you tonight, just to make sure that you're in the loop going forward. With that, happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Do I have any council questions at this time? Councilmember Mangone?
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. Just one question, what's the timeline for the early construction package?
Yeah, the timeline for the early construction package, it would start effective almost immediately and they would go through October 31st, I want to say. We, so October 31st, 2028.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McReynolds, followed by councilmember Campos.
Thank you. Could you go to slide 10? So just a personal preference, like C-MAR, if you could just, I know what it means, but if we could let everybody else, just so we reduce that barrier to entry. Actually, my question's regarding slide 11. So it's a $3 million contract. How many engineers do they have working on this?
There's a lot. I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, but it's a large team to deliver a project this side. And in addition, we have what we call our prime consultant and they have sub consultants working underneath them. So there's different, you know, we'll have our, you know, our Kennedy Jenks is an expert in the treatment process, but they also have a team who focuses solely on geotechnical engineering, that the subgrade portion of the work. They have a team that specializes in site civil work, that portion of, you know, the pipelines and the layout of the pipes, the network in the wastewater plants, a whole discipline. So there's a lot of different disciplines within this. I don't know the exact number, but I'm going to guess that there's at least 10 to 15 highly involved people on this size of a project. Again, they're balancing a lot of other projects as well. They have varying, you know, commitments to the project, but they all have certain expertise that they bring forward. And again, you know, whether it's an expert on a certain treatment process or another.
It's just, it's a very pricey number for an engineer, in my opinion.
Understood. And you know, I will say from personal experience, as a percentage, this amount is not very large. I was in public works before I joined Ventura Water to work on this program. Percentage wise, it's not very large, but obviously the scale of this project is like anything, nothing like we've ever seen. And so that's why that number is really large. And I will say that we have that money set aside, so they're there when we need them during construction. But again, this is one of those projects where we're hoping not to exceed that amount and certainly we've had contracts, especially on engineering services during construction, where if it's not needed, that money is not spent and the city doesn't pay that, but it's, it is there if we need them. It is a large project with a lot of complex reviews that will be needed.
And is this a GMACs contract or not to exceed?
This is the typical professional services contract, not to exceed.
Okay. And then the next slide, 12. This is probably a question for the city manager, since we're doing this Procore software. So as part of the council communications, or what am I looking for? The newsletter you send out, connection, council connection. Could we add a, since we're going to be having the Procore software, so that we can start seeing the schedule, status of the schedule on it?
We, if you'd like to see, Procore can do a lot of, has a lot of functionality and we're really, we have a software that is already our, our construction manager has a software that is even more detailed than Procore that we're going to be relying on for developing the schedule. If there's any schedule updates you guys are looking for, we'd be happy to provide them at any time, at any frequency.
I'm just thinking a quarterly schedule update.
Quarterly schedule update. And you're okay with that being produced in or out of Procore, you're just looking for a detailed schedule update?
Yeah, as we're starting the project, let's, are we staying on?
Sure, I think we can do that and/or post it to the website for public consumption.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Campos?
Could I have slide three up? So while we're waiting for this project to be completed, are we still using this facilities here?
Yeah, we are. And, and you know, there is some risk, but you know, we're trying to move as quick as we can acknowledging that this infrastructure is failing. What you're seeing a lot of has been, you know, had small repairs and retrofits over the years and they're obviously not holding up very well and we do want to move forward quickly.
Thank you. I also would like to say, on the 4th of July at the water booth, Ms. Dorrington and her staff actually had an example of a membrane bioreactor there and engaged well in explaining how it all worked. And if you missed that, you should visit her office and learn the really serious scientific detail. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Schumacher?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, staff, for the presentation. I just have a quick question. In the hopefully unlikely event, can we go to slide 10? And I know you emphasized guaranteed, which I love, and I'm hoping that's true. In the unlikely, fingers crossed, that it, that something happens that you have to come back to council and say, hey, just kidding, we actually need more money. What happens? What would we do? I mean, what would our options be then?
The first step would be, we have the city-controlled contingency, so we're bringing forth that additional 10% that is meant to control those additional costs and that is normally enough to see projects through. I will say, within that $80 million, we have tried to anticipate any potential risks. I mean, the one that comes to mind and frequently talked about these days is tariffs. We don't know exactly what tariffs are going to be, you know, in a few months from now. But what we have tried to do is within that $80 million, we have allowances and we have contingencies that are built in for that, that if tariffs come to fruition, like we fear they might on this project, that is already accounted for and we have an allowance built in to that $80 million that we will deduct from and is allowed to be used only for that. And if tariffs don't come to fruition or, you know, they drop back down, then that's money the city would recoup and not expend. And then it's in categories that's only allowed for that. And so we've really, and that's just an example, we really tried to look at what are the risks that we have on this project and how can we make sure we're covered if those risks come true? And that's really a key advantage of having the contractor onboard early is at the city, we do these projects, we do construction projects, we have our contractor, our designer, they do projects, but we also have our contractor helping identify risks as well. So we've got really all the parties involved in our project this side, looking for potential risks that we've seen on other projects and that might come up and we've really tried best to account for those. But again, to answer your question, we have that 10% on top, which is meant to control those measures.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions from council, I'll go ahead and recognize public comment for this item. Mr. City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Thank you, Mayor. We have one speaker on this item, Paul Johnson. Paul, you'll have three minutes.
Good evening. So I think the idea of guaranteed maximum price is a curious one. Who's guaranteeing it? What's backing it up? So before, before council votes on something like that, I hope you understand what they mean by guaranteed maximum price and I would look under the hood. Like suppose they decide, yes, we can't finish the project with what you got, have a nice day. Who's going to come in and fill in the gap? Do they have insurance? Is Barclays going to cover whatever it takes to finish the job? If that company that you've hired goes bankrupt, decides that we just don't want to do it anymore? What's guaranteed maximum price? What's backing it up? The other thing I'm very disturbed about is there seemed to be this consent decree, which I apologize, had not read, and it's largely driven by some environmental regulations that kicked in. Well, you know, dumping, you know, putting wastewater or stormwater into the ocean is not a good thing. You've got to, you know, it's a waste of water, so you have to spend hundreds of millions of dollars to do something else with it. The people are going to have to pay for this. I think we should look at alternatives to spending money we don't have on stuff perhaps we do not need. And even this project as specified to meet those environmental contingencies in the consent decree, perhaps there's cheaper ways of doing it. Thank you.
And our final speaker, George Amendola.
Hi, good evening again. And coming back from the break, I counted on this item coming before you. I didn't think that the last item was going to slow anything down. I had been hopeful it might. So reading through staff recommendations, if you approve that tonight, you're pretty much giving a go-forward and you don't even know what your cash flow analysis looks like. You don't know what your bond payments looks like. You don't know what your rates, you have guidance on rates, but it's not all before you. But if you give a go-forward tonight, it's a foregone conclusion, everything else goes through and the rate payer is burdened. And you don't have all the information in front of you as far as what this is going to cost, how you're going to pay for it. You have some guidance, but you don't have the information. We just heard that from the last agenda item. So I don't know how you make this decision in good conscience. I wouldn't want to be in your shoes because nobody is going to remember past councils making this decision. They're not going to remember Matt LeVere, they're not going to remember Eric Nosorenko, they're going to remember Jeanette Sanchez Palacios and Doug Halter. That, when this goes forward, that's who the resident rate payers are going to remember. Thanks very much. Good night.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you. And so I'll bring it back to council for final deliberations and a motion is required. Any final input? Okay, seeing none, I do need a motion to move forward, whether forward or not. Councilmember Duran?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So you're asking for approval for us to draw off the grant that we have for this particular project, correct?
We're asking for approval to start work and construction on the membrane bioreactor. This will be money that will go towards pulling from the grant funding.
Right. So will this, will this affect, I mean, it's grant funding, so will it affect anybody's rates? Will it affect?
We have accounted for the costs of this project in both the current rate cycle and the future rate cycle. So the projections that you saw for the next five years are in, those costs are in there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mangone, followed by councilmember Schumacher?
What are the impacts if we waited until September 23rd to make a decision on this
Thank you, Councilor Mangone. Again, going back to the slide on the timing, the legal consent decree and regulatory discharge permit timelines, right now, we are on track for those. However, the timeline is tight and slipping away quickly. Additionally, really, one of the largest ones here is that grant funding that we've just discussed. We have $90 million in grants, but to receive that money, we have to have, we have to spend $360 million. And the timeline for us looking at our cash flows to spend $360 million between the MBR project and future Ventura Water Pure cost is tight. It's $360 million is obviously a lot of money and we want to do our best to make sure that we receive that full amount of grant funding. And that's the large driver.
Thank you. And in addition to that, we have made an estimation, the longer we wait on the projects, we risk $1 to $3 million in cost increases per month. So what the guaranteed maximum price and the availability of the equipment we want to secure through your break could rise in cost.
So you, by those figures, we're looking at the potential to $2 to $6 million increases by waiting?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Schumacher, followed by Deputy Mayor Halter.
Thank you, Mayor. Can I ask Ms. Mulligan to step up? Admittedly, I haven't watched the water commission on this, so I'd just like to hear the discussion and any feedback or additional comments that you'd like to add to the discussion.
When the water commission discussed this item, we didn't have the costs in front of us. They hadn't been, they weren't available when it came to the commission, but we feel that the project's essential. We understand the need for... that the project's essential. We understand the need for moving forward quickly for the reasons that Alec put forward. And really, the discussion was about that we need to move forward with the project. So we supported doing this part early.
So you knew the project was important, but you didn't have the costs, and you guys moved it forward?
We agreed with the concept of moving this portion of the contract, of the work forward.
And may I ask the staff why the cost wasn't ready?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. So on May 19th, we presented this, we gave a cost estimate. We said it would be approximately $80 million for this work, and for the contract with PCL, and $3 million for the contract with Kennedy Jenks. Those amounts did not include contingencies, but outside of that, the estimates were roughly correct. But we did not have actual numbers at the time, as Susan Mulligan pointed out, thank you. But we did return on June 23rd to give them an update and let them know the exact costs, so they were aware. But we, when we, we asked them to vote in favor of this, that was when they just had the estimates at the time.
Can we not do that in the future? I just want to make sure that the commissioners have everything that they need to make an informed decision. I find this really shocking, actually, that you guys moved something, that you didn't have the complete understanding of what we're getting into.
We didn't approve this contract. We agreed that we felt it was necessary to move forward with this contract quickly and early. And I believe that was how he characterized our decision. But yes, we did not review this contract, these numbers, because it wasn't before us.
I understand, and thank you, Ms. Mulligan. And my point is, is that, you know, for you, as a commission, who we rely on, you all need to have all the information in front of you before you make a decision. So that's just my request, moving forward, please. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Halter?
Great, thank you, Madam Mayor. So, and this is the wastewater treatment facility to replace the one that's crumbling right now, and it's at the end of its life. What would happen if this wastewater facility that we have now actually completely starts deteriorating? Would we have to be pumping sewage to Oxnard to be treated, or?
Deputy Mayor Halter, there are some contingency plans. We have availability of some contract tankage and facilities. We could kind of do a triage and a setup to prepare for that, depending on what the severity is. In a failure, there probably wouldn't be enough infrastructure to avoid some penalties, fines and penalties, and discharging of sewage to the estuary.
And this kind of falls under the realm of, the longer a project takes to actually get out of the ground, the more risk you start assuming. And we're living in very uncertain, very risky times right now. And I know that wastewater treatment is something that's a necessity. It's not if, you know, should we do this, or shouldn't we do it? We have to do, we have to create a new wastewater facility, which is our bioreactor. So this is something that, to me, was a no-brainer. I would agree that I think it'd be best to have all financial information upfront, if we could. I also understand, though, at times, there's an urgency to at least give direction. And it appears that it's fitting inside the 315 that we were at, and which is, and we got that down by 13 million by changing the location. I'm sure we'll continue to look at other ways. The one thing that one of the speakers brought up, though, as far as the guarantee, how does that work? Just so I know, I wanted to have a clearer idea on that.
Yeah, the contractor, PCL, is the one who's guaranteeing that they will perform that work. So they, there are bonds in place to ensure that they will complete that work.
Okay. And they will, would they be taking contracts as well from local labor providers?
Yes, they will be soliciting for bids and proposals for a wide range of work to perform this project.
Is there a chance that they could complete this sooner than 2028?
I will try to ensure we can do that as best we can. Yeah, and this is, I will mention, too, that this is a portion of the work, that when we move forward, we move forward in the winter, there'll be more work overlapping at the same time to complete the project overall. So it's not like we have to get to this milestone, stop work, and then start up the next phase of the work necessarily.
Okay, it's not really on the critical path, but it's just about moving forward and getting this built before our facility actually deteriorates. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Campos?
So I would like to ask, regarding one of the speaker's questions or comments, if we approve this tonight, but later we do not approve the water pier project, will this solve the problem of those buildings and the treatment? Or is it just throwing ointment in the, throwing a fly in the ointment?
The membrane bioreactor project is going to provide wastewater treatment for the city, the basic needs to meet the discharge requirements for the city. Where it dovetails in with the consent decree is that it is a more robust treatment that gets us down to the four milligrams per liter of any discharge that remains in the estuary. We do have infrastructure in place to remove the discharge from the Santa Clara River Estuary, but we still have the issue of that discharge meeting a beneficial reuse, adhering to water recycle policy, and looking for water supply. So the membrane bioreactor project produces a better quality effluent to support the advanced purification facility. So the infrastructure that will be invested in the advanced purification facility will actually be protected and probably extended a little bit in its membrane life, because we're giving it a finer water quality as a source water.
Thank you.
I just had a quick question, going back to the PCL bids. Will they let you know when they go to bid? I'm assuming they would, but I don't know.
They do, yes. And they actually have a procurement plan that we've reviewed and approved, and the city will have some say when they're moving forward, to make sure that who they select, whether it be a supplier or a contractor, is the best value for the city.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious to see if we had any say in who they select.
We do have some say, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Schumacher?
Thank you. Are we in deliberations now, or are we just still asking questions?
You can ask questions.
Okay, I'll save mine for deliberations.
Oh, okay. Any other questions? No? Okay, then, Councilmember Schumacher, go for it.
Careful. Serendipitous. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna support this project, only because I think we already discussed that otherwise, it would be, it would cost us more. But I am a little disturbed by the fact that our commissioners don't, didn't get the whole picture. So if we could please clean that up, I would appreciate that. But, you know, given the work that you already have done, and making sure that we try as much as possible to get costs down, and we're trying to make sure that we guarantee that this is the best-case scenario, and, you know, unfortunately, we're in that place where often this council doesn't have any choice. So that's where I'm at.
Thank you. A motion is required.
I'll move to approve this contract.
Thank you. Thank you. So a motion and a second.
You can go ahead and enter your vote now.
Thank you, staff.
All votes have now been entered. Seven ayes, and the motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to our formal item number six, with all you still at the seat, this will be the contract award with PCL Construction for the pre-construction phase of the Construction Management at Risk Contract for the Advanced Water Purification Facility Project. So staff, proceed with your presentation. Thank you.
Good evening again, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, City Council, members of the public. We're bringing forth the contract award for the pre-construction phase of the Construction Management at Risk Contract for the Advanced Water Purification Facility. So we'll go over a brief background of the Advanced Water Purification Facility, and an overview of the CMAR process, once again, the benefits that we're bringing forth by awarding this at this time. We'll go over the current status, next steps, and end on recommendations. So again, I won't spend too much time on this, given Gina's presentation on the history, but tonight, we're talking about the Advanced Water Purification Facility, which is part of the Ventura Water Pier Program. You can see it here, this is the facility that will receive highly-treated tertiary effluent from our water reclamation facility, and be distributed for groundwater injection. The ADPF will utilize reverse osmosis, ultraviolet light, with advanced oxidation and chlorination, to ensure the water meets or exceeds the requirements for groundwater injection. And it removes and breakdowns any compounds or unwanted pathogens. So that's the project we're discussing tonight. Here's the current cost estimates for all of the Ventura Water Pier Program, and this is for Phase 1A. So far, you can see what we've spent to date, and our estimated remaining costs coming up on the program. Okay. So the current status of the Advanced Water Purification Facility, we have a timeline here. Back in June 2024, we awarded the design of this contract to Hazen and Sawyer. In February of this year, they produced a basis of design report, at which time, we solicited for proposals for the Construction Manager at Risk. When that process was going on, the design was progressed, and then we've now reached the 30% design milestone, and we received those plans earlier last month. And now is the time that we want to award the Construction Manager at Risk pre-construction phase contract. So moving forward, as we progress from the 30% design to the 60% design, we can capture all of that contractor input. And the next milestone will obviously be that 60% milestone. And should we move forward tonight with this contract, it would allow us to return late winter, this coming winter, with a 60% guaranteed maximum price for the whole facility, again, giving us that cost certainty significantly earlier on in the project. Okay, so the Construction Manager at Risk, this is a similar slide to what we discussed in the last one, so I won't go over it in as much detail. But we're really looking for at this time is that contractor collaboration in design. So now is the time, when we're still in design, to make these changes, to address value engineering, constructability reviews, mitigate risk. We're at a unique position, where we're still working on, the facility's still coming together, and it's still very flexible as to what we do. So bringing this contractor on now has the potential to reduce the costs, reduce the risks, and increase the constructability. And so, again, looking at that value engineering is where they're looking to not decrease the functionality, but decrease the cost of the project with some creative ideas. So, again, they'll be developing an early cost model, so they're going to give us those improved schedules and estimates that we've seen on the membrane bioreactor project, which have been instrumental in our decision-making. And they're going to be putting together those guaranteed maximum price packages. Again, that's really, I think, what we're all looking for, is to know what this project is going to cost in the end, and this is how we get there. So, on April 20, sorry, April 2nd of this year, the city received four Construction Manager at Risk proposals for the Advanced Water Purification Facility. They were first assessed for a pass/fail criteria, reviewing financial statements, their ability to bond, which is what is guaranteeing them to do the work, as we just discussed, and their ability to be insured for a project of this size. We then, all four, did move on from that criteria to the proposal evaluation committee. This committee was made up of not just Ventura Water Pier staff, but other staff of Ventura Water, and outside agency staff. They were reviewed for the following five categories. Each of these proposals, which they were notified before they submitted proposals, reviewed based on their project team and key personnel, the experience and performance history, their approach to managing and performing these services, the pre-construction phase scope of services, of what they will be doing during this phase, and the fee proposal. So the fee proposal was there, where they actually told us what their percent profit is going to be, not just when they actually go to construction. So when we put together these guaranteed maximum price packages, there is a set percent markup that they lock in their profit in advance. And so that was considered in our selection as well. So the highest-ranked proposing contractor was PCL Construction, which you might recall was the same one that is, we're working with currently on the membrane bioreactor project. This contract they're bringing forth tonight, for them to, again, help us reduce the costs and get that cost certainty early, and allow us to have these options of guaranteed work, or guaranteed maximum price packages, that'll go through March 31st, 2026. And by that time, we should have presented to you guys already the guaranteed maximum price for this project. And we can elect to move forward with it or not at that time. The contract is $1.2 million, with the city-controlled contingency of $120,000, approximately 10%. So all in, $1.32 million. And you can see on the right here, that of the total project, I don't want to downplay that $1.32 million is a lot, but it is about two-thirds of a percent in the scheme of this project's estimate. So we feel like it brings good value forth at this time. So, and I'll just add on to this one last comment here. This was brought forth to Water Commission at the same date on May 19th. At the time, we gave them a range of what this cost would likely be, because it was not, we didn't have the exact cost at the time. We told them that we gave them a range, and we said, the upper limit, we believe it'll be $3 million. So as you can see, we're well below the $3 million, but I apologize, at the time, where they were given an estimated range. On June 23rd, we did return to them and give them the exact cost, what this entails. So it is consistent with the city's strategic priority. The recommendations in the staff report support the strategic priority of infrastructure and the focus area of continue to maintain and improve roads, water, storm drains, and parks. And our recommendations tonight are to approve and authorize the pre-construction phase for the Construction Manager at Risk for the Advanced Water Purification Facility, an amount of $1.2 million, and additionally, for a contingency of approximately 10%. Okay, with that, happy to take any questions and discuss further.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilmember Schumacher?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, thank you for your presentation. I just want to make sure that I understand this. I know that in the last item, you had said that, you know, we're hoping to spend $360 million, so that way we can get the $90 million grant. I want to make sure that I, that we're, that's not a motivation for you to get to that threshold, right? And you're not just adding things to, I want to make sure that, just, let's just put that out on the table now, because I don't want people to think that, oh, well, let's get there, increasing the rates, just so that way we can get this $90 million, when really, we can just get to $270 million and just not get the grant at all. So can you just confirm that for me?
Councilmember Schumacher, the costs of the projects, Ventura Water Pier and the membrane bioreactor, qualified for the large-scale grant funding, and we went out and obtained that. We've got a total of $90 million. There's a, there's a percentage match that the city needs to contribute to, and or at least spend to, in order to draw from that. There are cost estimates, they are not being marked up, so that we can spend more to get more. They are, they fall well within the costs of these projects.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mangone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You mentioned this is going to help us get to that early guaranteed maximum price, right? That's really kind of the intent behind this. We, I've asked you this question before in a meeting, but can you confirm when we're planning on getting to that point?
Yeah, so we, that'll come sometime in this coming winter, probably late coming winter. So I don't have an exact date yet, but we can start working on that if we decide to move forward tonight. In the meantime, they'll be looking for cost-saving measures, developing that cost model in advance of actually getting that guaranteed maximum price put together.
This year, though? That's your plan on?
This, planning on? This fiscal year? So, so when we bring forward the guaranteed maximum price for the full construction, again, that'll probably be late winter, yes, or early next year.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. That answers it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions from council, I'm gonna go ahead and recognize any public comments, if we have any.
Thank you, mayor. I've not received any public comments for item six.
Okay. Thank you. I'll bring it back for council deliberation, and a motion is required for this item. Any deliberation?
I think this is a, I think this is a necessary step to further completing, identifying the cost of this project and how we move forward, and I would love, as it proceeds, maybe get an early holiday present and see it really come down in costs. Maybe they find some other ways to do that, but I think it really informs whether or not any rate increases are needed, what's needed, and hopefully fits inside the framework that we are discussing. Okay? And with that, I would go ahead and do a motion to support staff's recommendations.
Thank you. I do have a, Councilmember Mangone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
That there's a motion on the floor?
Yeah, I just, I just have to air my grievance, I think, out loud. So, I'm concerned with this because I understand what you're saying, and I agree with it. So, I have, I'm leaning towards kind of supporting the motion, but at the same time, I'm concerned when we're, we're not gonna really be presented the impacts of the rates, on the rate pairs till September. I'd like to get to that guaranteed maximum price, if we even have an idea. That's not gonna happen till after that. So, I wanna get to that point, but I feel like this process is like backwards. I know that's not your guys' fault, it's just the way that it's going, but that's just the concern of mine.
Thank you, Councilmember Mangone. There is a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. So, we have a motion on the floor in a second. Mr. City Clerk?
Thank you, mayor. You can go ahead and enter your vote now for item number six. All votes have now been entered. Six ayes, one no, and the motion carries.
Thank you. And our last formal item, item number seven, is a resolution adopting the third addendum to the Certified Final Environmental Impact Report for the Ventura Water Supply Projects.
Point of order. Can we just vote to go past 10 o'clock now, so that way we don't interrupt the staff presentation?
Uh, thank you. Yes.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Go ahead and enter your vote now on the motion to extend the meeting beyond 10:00 p.m.
Thank you. That's what you have to remind me.
All votes have been entered. Seven ayes, and the motion carries.
Thanks so much. So, item number seven, staff, presentation whenever you're ready.
Okay. Thank you for the extension. I promise they're getting shorter and shorter, and this will be the shortest one of the night, so... Okay, so, final presentation, we're bringing forth the resolution to adopt Addendum 3 to the Certified Final Environmental Impact Report for the Ventura Water Pure, or sorry, Ventura Water Supply Projects. So, we'll cover the background information of why we're here tonight and what an environmental impact report is. We'll cover the overview of what the contents of this addendum 3 that we're bringing forth, and we'll jump into the recommendation. So, what is an EIR? So, an environmental impact report, a report to inform the public and public agency decision-makers of significant environmental impacts of proposed projects, identify possible ways to minimize those effects, and describe reasonable alternatives to those projects. So, in 2019, the Ventura Water Supply Project's environmental impact report for the Ventura Water Pure was certified by city council, so that was the initial one that we are now amending tonight. So, a bit of history again. In October, we have the initial Certified Environmental Impact Report. We did bring in September 2020, Addendum 1, which was for the Outfall Pipeline, and the, included the membrane bioreactor. In September 2023, Addendum 2 was approved, and that was for the advanced water purification facility. Really what that was, was we acquired the property, and then we brought it into the local coastal plan. So, that was the decision that I was bringing the local coastal plan, and it also made the zoning building heights consistent with the area. And so, tonight, we are bringing forth Addendum 3 for the injection wells, and I'll just state here that all of these are minor modifications that have been identified. As really we've progressed the design, we know more about what's needed to make this project happen, and so we just wanna make sure that if there's any environmental impacts, that we're looking into those and mitigating them if needed, but, yeah, so it's just revisiting as we progressed and further refined the project. So, Addendum 3, the potential changes that were identified were, we, so to get this information, we completed the groundwater modeling for the program, and a specific groundwater injection well site was identified. And so, the changes from the 2019 report to the Addendum 3 that we're bringing forth years, there was up to six wells at the time, three sites, based on the groundwater modeling. Now that that's been refined, it's been reduced to five wells at two sites. We're gonna have injection and extraction at the same well sites. We are now using, we're injecting and extracting at different locations, and you may remember that our extraction wells are actually existing wells in the area that no new infrastructure we built to start extracting the groundwater from this project. There was a pump station included back when we were planning to extract water. Now, we're gonna utilize our existing pump station, and that's no longer required. Things that have not changed are the groundwater basin, the capacity, and the footprint. So, I guess, before we get to the priority, I just wanna mention that there were no new impacts that were found in the report, and, you know, now it's just really helping us progress the planning of this project as we move forward. So, it is consistent with the strategic priority. The recommendations in the staff report support the strategic priority of infrastructure and the focus area to continue, continuing to maintain and improve roads, sorry, condition of roads, water, storm drains, and parks. So, the recommendation is adopt the resolution approving the third addendum to the Certified Environmental Impact Report for the Ventura Water Supply Projects, and the resolution is provided on the screen here. And with that, we're happy to take any questions.
Thank you for that. Any questions from council? Councilmember McReynolds?
Can you go to slide five? Just really quick, why are you bringing this forward if we're doing reduced impacts? Can you just keep the same?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember McReynolds. In the environmental impact report that was certified by city council in 2019, the general area for the groundwater wells was described and analyzed, and the two options of either using one well location, using the same well to inject and extract, or where you inject in one location and then let the water flow underground and then extract from another location, all of those options were analyzed, and as Mr. Roberts stated, as we move forward with the design, there's now more specificity of the exact location where the injection wells would be placed, and the framework of inject at that location and then extract from the city's existing groundwater wells on the Buena Ventura Golf Course. Additionally, within the groundwater basins, there's different aquifer layers within the groundwater basin, and that model, modeling has identified which aquifer layer the city will use. So, now that we have that specificity, it is recommended, under the California Environmental Quality Act, that the city move forward with an addendum to just confirm that there weren't any additional environmental impacts based on that new, more detailed information, and this analysis confirmed that there are none, and so the appropriate procedural step is for city council to approve that addendum and adopt a resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Halter?
Technical question. So, so that's interesting, that it moves that, the water flow rate moves that slow that we'll be able to extract in basically the same location or thereabouts in the same parcel. Is there a certain period of time that that needs to be extracted by? I know I'm getting off topic a little bit.
Deputy Mayor, just to clarify, the, one of the options was inject in, with the same well and extract. The city's not proposing that to do anymore, so we'd inject at one site, then it would travel, be at least two months underground. There's a requirement of the amount of time it needs to be underground, so achieve that minimum period, and then extract at the existing wells on Buena Ventura Golf Course.
Okay. Because the intent is, I believe, the water would be so pure that it actually needs the mix to get some of the mineral content put back in, that then mixes with our city water, because it goes from there, where does it go from there, just to be accurate?
Well, I'll mention that the, part of the advanced water purification process, you are right, the water will be starved for minerals, but we're gonna provide that minerals, that alkalinity back in the water at the advanced water purification facility. So, when it leaves the site, it's not starving for those ions, and it's not gonna be leaching stuff out of the ground and mixing. We've done leachate studies to show that it won't be mobilizing any unwanted compounds or anything from the groundwater.
Okay, I see.
And, yeah, from the Buena Ventura Golf Course, where the extraction wells currently are, where the water goes is into the city, it goes to a treatment plant nearby in that area of the city, and then it gets distributed across the city over there.
Okay. In the distribution system, and just to be accurate, how much of that water goes up to our water tanks on the hillside? Does, do the water tanks on our hillside tend to create a lot of the pressure for most of our hillside homes? I'm thinking of other things down the road, that's why I'm curious. And I'll stop asking questions after that.
I'll try my best. So, the city has 14 different pressure zones, and yes, this water gets pumped up to water tanks. The system is used as needed, where needed, based on demand.
I'm thinking about things down the road, maybe fire suppression type things, but anyways, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Duran?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick question. The extraction wells, you said, are at golf course, the golf course. The injection wells are where? Have you determined where those are?
Thank you, Councilmember Duran. As described in the addendum, they're in a vacant parcel on King Drive, and there's a figure one in the, in the addendum that shows the exact location, and here's a backup slide that shows that location.
King Drive is where?
So, King Drive is the dotted line near the, yeah, right there, and then the parcels on the right-hand side, Alec is circling it there.
And what, that land is designated for what right now?
Currently, it's just a vacant parcel, but it is on the edge of the auto center area.
What's it zoned for?
I believe commercial, let me, I'll chime in if that's incorrect.
And so, we obviously don't have plans for that commercial property, or are there plans for that commercial property?
Currently, the property is leased by GM, but it's been unused, and there are no current plans to do any development there. It's a vacant parcel, and it's been that way for a long time.
The Olivas Park Road, will it be passing right by there?
It will not.
It will not?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions from council, I'll recognize any public comment, if we have any.
Thank you, mayor. No public comment on item seven.
Okay. Thank you. So, back to council for deliberation, and a motion is required for this.
I move staff recommendation.
Thank you. I'll second.
Okay, we do have a motion in a second. Go ahead and enter your vote on item seven. All votes have now been entered. Seven ayes, and the motion carries.
Thank you. Again, thank you, staff, for all the presentations tonight and all the work that's been put into this. Before I go to general public comment, again, I just wanted to make a quick announcement of the ad hoc committee for the boards and commissions that will be working on, on that, and it's gonna be Councilmember Schumacher, Councilmember Mangone, and Councilmember McReynolds. So, just wanted to announce that, and I think they'll be meeting after the, after the break when we come back, so... With that, I will go to our public comment, general public comment, if we have any.
Thank you, mayor. No additional public comment at this time.
Okay. And so, with that, then, I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting at 10:04, and our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, August 19. After three meetings in a row, we, class dismissed. We are on break. Thank you.